The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes approval of regular session minutes of January twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, budget and finance minutes of January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, public relations minutes of January twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, along with the acceptance of warrants thirty-one V fourteen, thirty-three V fourteen, thirty-five V fourteen, thirty-four P fourteen, and thirty-six P fourteen.
So moved?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, tonight we're without our student rep, Mary Beth Papaka, she's a busy lady, so we gave her the evening off. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address any agenda items? Okay, we're gonna move along to the synthetic turf committee report, John Pingery.
And Mark Perry.
And Mark Perry, thank you for coming.
And Rob's gonna help, I think, and you Barbie.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming out.
It's cooling down again out there.
Yeah.
Bless you.
I couldn't believe when I saw that snow today.
Right.
Stop this fast and started.
I was like, wow.
That was amazing. They were right, a dusting to heaven.
One was showed up too.
Laura's warning me something for Monday, though I keep, like, putting that out of my memory. It's not gonna happen.
One more snow. It's a long-term forecast at this point. Stop doing it over there.
So, do you wanna start, John, with an update and then we can?
We can. Rob is gonna set up a thing that was sent from the engineer to show the plans and stuff like that, but just if you wanna, a quick update, the STACK committee has been meeting at least once a month, if not twice a month, trying to get the handle on what the costs are gonna be and where we need to go that we can come on budget. We're looking at, the town has given us one point two five million, and Georgetown Athletic Association's gonna donate up to five hundred thousand for insulation and the turf, and then possibly some more lighting if need be. The problem we're having is, we really, when we went in originally for the, to the CPC, we were looking for one point five million, we had a pretty tight budget going in, and they cut us to one point two five million, so we're, we're short. We just, so we have to look at various areas where we can try to have things done manually, like removal of the scoreboard, removal of some of these items, you know, save some money, maybe cut some trees. We're looking at all the areas we can to try to save money so we can get this project in on budget and at least get something that's usable. One of the big things that came up was the bleachers. If we had put the bleachers in where they were, where they were going to be, it was gonna be two hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars to do that, that permanent bleacher stands, but the real problem with it was, we would've had to put a building in and up to, I don't know, Carol could probably tell me, a ton of permanent bathrooms. So now we were talking about building, plumbing, all kinds of extra.
Also some sort of a leaching or a pumping station to get it from there to wherever it has to go.
Right, so that's something that's not off the table long-term, but in the first phase of this project, there's just no way we can do it, because that's probably adding another seven hundred and fifty thousand to the cost of the project, just can't be done. I think that, you know, once we get the, you know, the turf in, we get the lights in and people are using it, you know, maybe something could be done in the future to, to drive that kind of a, you know, fundraising event or, or something will make it go, but, you know, with that budget we're working on right now, there's just no way we can do that. So what we're looking at more is a portable set of bleachers that actually doesn't work bad with this, because we can move them around for the different, for the different sports that are gonna be played on there. They don't look quite as nice, but you know, when you move the, it's just gonna give, it will give you a little bit more room out in, you know, center field, you can move the bleachers to the, you know, the baseball diamond for football season, so it'll give us a little bit more flexibility on how you're gonna use the facility.
Right, and those portable stands are very portable.
Yes.
Like you were explaining how easy it is to-
Yeah, they just roll them.
To move them and-
Right, they just attach them to the, to, you know, the truck or whatever and just move them right around the field, so it's not, it's not the worst alternative, it's just, you know, it's the best thing we can come up with, with, with the, you know, with the monetary problems that we would, are encountering.
And there is some seating, right, John?
Yeah, and the baseball field has, has seating on both sides. Now you have it up on the hill, but we're coming into the, into the hill about forty-five or fifty feet from where it currently is. This is gonna be a little bit built up over here, but you have seating on either side of the player area, so that's permanent, that'll stay there. One of the things we talked about was putting a gate here, so we could take the, the seating out. Mike, Mike Anderson's issue was, he has no place to store movable seating right now because of up next to the maintenance shed, we've got the storage containers, you know, parking's at a premium, so he would take his Kubota and pull them out for a game and, and pull them, pull them back. That's kind of the plan. The other thing that would change from this field, which you currently don't have, is there's a fence along the side here, and we still have, I don't know, ten or twelve feet, there's enough room for a vehicle to drive on the outside of the fence, but also people will be able to stand over there while the games are going. Currently, right now, you're not able to access that for soccer, lacrosse, or any of the football games, you can't.
I don't know, just to add to that, you see those little dots that they're showing up above that? Those are where the pilings would be if we were ever gonna put bleachers in for, at a permanent in the future. I don't know if you guys can see the red dots above those, above that block line up there, do you guys see that?
Yeah.
Everybody see those?
Yes.
So that's where they would go in at some point in the future, and there's a question is, you know, we're gonna try and have those approved at the conservation hearing, so that, you know, we can do this at some point, you know, so, so they are in on the plan, it's just a matter of, you know, when are they gonna be put in and, you know?
But at the last STACK committee meeting, which was after the school committee meeting, because we had this conversation here, remember, Rob had made a good point about, you know, put them in now, but at the STACK committee, it was discussed, because they ended up being much more expensive than we had thought, so when the, when the committee talked, the recommendation was that there's the plan, and then there's, what do they call the alternatives or the alternates?
Alternates.
Alternates.
Right.
And that, there was then discussion about putting, putting the footings on the alternate list, and it actually was not the top alternate. There were things that were weighed as more expensive, which we can obviously go through the list with you, but it ended up, I think, even Rob felt, you know, as we looked at it, it is a great idea, and as John said, in the future, we'd really love to maybe potentially be able to do it, but at this point, given the constraints of the funding and, and trying to get the things that we think are most important-
Right.
It didn't rise to the, I think it was twenty thousand dollars, right? Wasn't it, when it was done?
Yeah.
And I think we thought it, we anticipated it was gonna be much less, but what was the reason, Rob? It was the geotech, it was all the underground dirt and all that stuff, right?
Well, they, what they discovered was that the, the subsurface material is, is a pretty mushy kind of material, so they have to do a fair bit, they have to do spread footings versus just summer tours.
Yeah, and we, our initial, our initial digging that we did on this about two and a half years ago, that was, it was, at that point, they dug, they dug here and here down fifteen feet, and the, the point of digging at that point was what type of footings they would need for lights, and that was also discussed, they're gonna need a wider footing for that, for that area.
Yeah. So what we're looking at now is, it's probably gonna be, the numbers we're looking at right now, it's probably gonna be four lights, okay? The baseball field in the initial phase may not be able to be lit, you know, we're still looking at all the different options with that, so you'd have the football slash soccer lacrosse facility would definitely be lit, and we're thinking if, if something has to suffer, the baseball plays in the summer for the most part, and it's light, so that we could probably get away with maybe not lighting it for a little bit of time, and we're trying not to get to that, because it, you know, for GAA, as far as the donation, it's all about the lights, okay? Because-
Right.
You know, if we don't have the lights, we can't use that facility, especially in the fall and in the spring, because it's dark too early, so that's a very big bone of contention with the GAA.
I don't, it, I was just, it just popped into my head, would it help you to consider doing the, taking the money for the seating that's associated with the baseball and putting that into the lights?
That's pretty small, if you look at that, it's-
Not even close.
Yeah, that's just, that's just basically a slab that's got a couple of small sets of bleachers in it, that, that slab has gotta be there, you know, it's, you know, that, that area's gonna be leveled out because of the retaining wall, so that's not it. Like I said, we're, we're looking in the back as far as tree removal, we've looked at hot topping savings, so, I mean, the goal for us, we need to put the infrastructure in for these poles, because it's under, you know, and it's around, so you'd, you'd have, you'd have about a six-foot, I think she said about a six-foot base sitting there, and then the poles and the lights are about sixty thousand dollars each.
Right, and if you look at the page four of five-
Yeah.
You start looking at the alternative, alternates, so the goal would be, you know, who knows, the turf has, when it gets bid out, might come in last, there may be other places where we think it's gonna cost, these are estimated costs, obviously, if some things change, then the first priority and the first alternate would be those lights.
Right.
'Cause they're important, but they're just not-
My only concern now, that I didn't know before when I was talking, when we were setting those priorities, was I thought we had a stable base for that mound that we were already using, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's the case right now, so that I'm-
What, the pitching mound?
The pitching mound that we were gonna, we were, they have an estimate on there for like twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty-eight.
I think it was twenty, I, I think that's a typo to tell you the truth.
Oh.
Yeah, it was twenty initially.
It does show twenty and then twenty-eight on another line.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a typo, but whatever, twenty, twenty-eight thousand, I think it's twenty thousand. So we were taking that out, thinking we were gonna use that other mound, and I'm not quite sure that other mound's gonna be big enough for the size of the kids, 'cause that other mound we were using was for pony, it was mostly twelve-year-olds, so now you're gonna have kids that are sixteen and seventeen on that mound, so we gotta do a little double-checking on that. I mean, it's not a huge item, but, I mean, every, every one of these things adds up, and we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, make the numbers work any way we can, so.
So I'm just pointing out, John, that that's a high pri, if there's any extra money, it's a high-
Yeah, it is a high, it is on the priority list, there's no question of this, you know, just as we're looking at it.
Because we talked about the lining, you know, about lining the field, and we've gone out and done some checking, like at Manchester High School, they're lined for soccer, lacrosse, football, so that was one of the questions, remember, Rob, how many, but, you know, we're gonna use it for all these sports, so we're gonna line this field, because it's a tough thing, you know, it's done right in the turf.
Oh, yeah, they sew it, they sew it in there, there's no painting.
Right, and we don't, I mean, I talked to the athletic director at Manchester High School, and he told me, he said, you know, two-thirty on a Wednesday afternoon, if switches flooded, they call us and say, can we come over here? He says, the first thing I know is, one, is we don't have to pay for buses, two, we don't have to line the field, and three, you know, our field is playable, so, you know, he said, I can't imagine trying to get this field lined at two-thirty in the afternoon, so that's a big cost also going forward, not having to line the field.
No, silly question, if that happened, do they pay Manchester?
I don't know.
For that site?
They don't, they don't pay them for the field, but they save the transportation cost.
Save the transportation.
And you basically end up getting a home game on your own field, so it's a, it's a pretty big-
They've played a lot of games at, at Manchester, 'cause they have those two fields-
Right.
But they get a lot of phone calls be, when, when the fields are not, 'cause people know-
They would have to pay then, just like we had to pay at Avril when you guys were renting out that field, if it was not their own team playing.
Yeah, but I mean, for their own teams, they get a lot more games that are played there, because the fields are, are able to be used.
So part of the process that the STACK wasn't involved in, just to inform you guys of what's happened, is the Georgetown Athletic Association met with five different vendors of, of field turf, or sport turf, sprint turf, UBU turf, and I forget the other one, I apologize.
Shaw.
Shaws, so we got five different companies in. I think one of them, it's, it's hard, they're all so competitive, and if you sat there and you looked at them and you listened to the spiels, you were thinking, it's hard to, to see a difference. It looks like at this point that our engineer is recommending a dual, dual film fiber and said-
Yeah, dual purpose, two and a half.
It's a two and a half inch-
Right.
All rubber fill, like half rubber, half sand, so it's just a matter, at this point, we're kinda waiting to see who the, who the general contractor's gonna be to set, before we decide which one we're gonna go with. They're all coming in right now between, it looks like three eighty and four bucks a foot installed, so it's a hundred and five thousand square feet, so we're looking at between four hundred and four hundred and twenty thousand for the, the turf and the installation of the turf, in which case, we would still have another Georgetown Athletic Association, when I say we at this point, would still have seventy to eighty thousand dollars to put toward another light and try to get that baseball thing covered, so that's what we're looking at right now. You know, we're just looking at how we can spread the money or best use the money to try to get as much in there as we can, but I mean, as, as far as the Georgetown Athletic Association, we obviously want the turf and we want the lights, because six o'clock at, on a, on November fifteenth, it's black.
Right.
Pitch, pitch black out there, you can't see anything, so we have to have the lighting to get the use, so.
Sure. So important dates coming up, you have March sixth, you're going to the Conservation Commission, right?
Right.
And then there are, it's now the bidding process starts, correct?
Well, we gotta get through this conservation, I mean, as, as you know, there was a meeting in February, they didn't have a quorum-
Yeah.
Didn't have enough people, you know, we're really up against it, because our project is based on, you know, a kickoff date, you know, our, how, how they price this, you know, a lot of the places wanna start in June, we're trying to start in April, May, to save money on this project, because, you know, we're, we're able to give up these fields for the spring, which a lot of schools aren't able to do that. You know, we'll work our JV baseball into the varsity, the lacrosse will, you know, we've got everything lined up to go, but conservation, we need to, we need to get them-
We lost a month last month, because they didn't have a quorum to open and review the engineering plan, so we've lost a month there.
Yeah.
So all of our estimates were based on an April timeline, because everybody wants to construct in June.
You know, a one point two five million dollar project, twenty percent if we go back is a huge amount of money to not be able to get these meetings scheduled and reviewed.
You have a, you have a timeline, a revised timeline on your table, so that'll give you a sense of how this will progress.
Well, if, if anything, I think that is the biggest problem that we face right now, is that timeline, because if we end up having to take a regular timeline like everybody else, and we have to rebid the, you know, as far as take new numbers on the project, that throws everything into, you know, throws everything out of whack, so we're gonna have to, you know, that's the biggest issue that I'm worried about right now.
Well, let's hope for a quorum on March sixth, I mean, would it-
I think they have other matters too, not just this project.
Okay, good.
Hopefully that will be the case.
Right, but then they need to be able to push it through and-
They have to be able to agree on the plan.
Exactly, and usually what happens is, they wanna look at it, then they wanna come back and they wanna have a second meeting on it, now you're looking at April sixth, unless they're willing to take a special meeting, and I, you know, I don't know if they're willing to-
They often wanna have an independent person.
They wanna have that independent review, so that's why it would've been nice to have had that started, so that we were, you know, already moving, I mean, our timeline was tight as it started, I mean, we went through a, a long, I would say arduous RFQ process to hire the engineer, and that set us back probably about six months, and then, you know, so we were looking for that April timeline, now we gotta get through CONCOM, if we end up getting pushed back and getting out of prime season again, we're looking at the fall, if, if the numbers don't work, so.
And that would be a big issue for the way we've got the sports schedules.
That sounds weird.
We're, we're assuming that this is gonna be ready, so that the, the football and the fall sports can, can use it, so if it wasn't gonna be installed till the fall, that's another, that's another matter for us, and that's a hardship, because now we're gonna have to use transportation, find all-
Soccer, football, right.
You know, we're gonna have to find out-
Everybody knows, Penbrook is out of play for-
Yeah, Penbrook's out of play.
You know, we have all the baseball, all the softball is in, it's gonna be scheduled off of there for the spring, and they're gonna go up top, they're gonna go on to West Street, so by summer, our fields are gonna be completely run to dirt.
We are gonna have a real hardship losing those Penbrook fields, 'cause that's, that's a couple of fields that get a lot of use. I mean, we have two baseball fields on one, we have softball field on the lower one, you know, we play football up there, I mean, to move all those sports onto, onto grass, we're gonna run the gra, I mean, we already run the grass off them, so I don't know how much worse it can get, but it's gonna be worse.
They're pretty, they're pretty muddy.
Yeah, so that's, that's the issue.
But if it did go into fall, like, where would we play football?
We'd have to, we'd have to rent something like Avril or-
Well, it's either that or you play every game as an away game.
As an away game.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because that's what we're doing with some of our-
That's a cost to use the gate.
Right now, with our, our baseball program right now, with Penbrook being the way it is, all our games are away now, we don't have any, we have no home game scheduled for the farm this year, it's just because we can't, we don't have the, we don't have the fields.
Can you clarify for me, so the conservation hearing, I'm looking at the revised agenda, the schedule?
It says two.
And so, conservation meeting was canceled on February sixth?
Correct.
Correct.
And then the next one shows up, which is implying it was the second conservation hearing on March sixth?
Oh, was that what the two means?
I believe so.
Yeah, two, I think is the second meeting, yeah.
Where would that second hearing then show up, since that's gonna be the first hearing?
I don't know.
There's a second hearing showing up, is that what you're asking me?
Well, no, no, it, they, it's got a two next to the conservation hearing.
Down the bottom it says assumed April tenth.
Is this the original sheet that you handed out at STACK, because this not, it doesn't look like the computerized one, 'cause we have a-
This was revised the eleventh of February.
Yeah, this one is what she said.
Nick, is there a good chance that you'll only need this one conservation hearing? I mean, do you know exactly what the committee is looking for?
It's not in there, I mean, we're gonna beg them to do a, in my mind, we're gonna ask them to have a special being-
Does it work on this timeline?
Doesn't hurt us to ask, when we're sitting there saying, can you guys do a meeting?
Yeah, they've known about it, we've-
Because we lost that, you know, lost that-
Conservation hearing if required.
I'm just hoping there's a possibility of that. I mean, I'm not looking for guarantees, obviously.
No, it's not required, but-
Right, it's only if-
The problem is, they won't make a decision on this, because their engineer will not have reviewed all the information, even though it's all been submitted, the hearing hasn't been opened, so I don't think they're gonna have the engineer reviewing that.
That must be just their next schedule.
They're gonna have an independent engineer reviewing all the information, all the, all the numbers, so I don't think they're gonna have that guy reviewing it until after that first hearing, so seems to me we're gonna need a special meeting, you know, a couple weeks later.
Well, John, it says here, it says here, conserva, conservation hearing if required, assumed April tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
But it's after all the other things.
But it's after everything else happens, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
I know, so that's why I'm saying, we need to push that date, we need to see if they'll be willing to have a special meeting, I don't know if they will or not, I mean, I know when we were, I was on the zoning board, we would have, we had forty B hearings out the Wazoo, we had three going at one time, we were meeting two to three times a month, and that was just the way it was, you had, you know, that everything was up against the clock, and we were, we were there a couple times a month minimum.
Well, I think that the STACK committee and Lindsay and, you know, everybody's been, and Steve, Steve the conservation agent, I think everybody's been really trying to figure out as much as they can, like, what really gets a yes vote, like, you know, and I think when we were talking about putting those footings, and there was a question of whether or not that might, you know, cause some people to be a little concerned, 'cause you generally don't put footings in unless you're gonna put stands in, and they were kind of hoping to keep that area undisturbed, so maybe because there's no longer a plan to do that at this point in time, maybe there, there will be less concern. I, I think that Steve and Lindsay have been talking about, like, what are those things that, you know, the Conservation Commission would look to see were taken care of and addressed, and I think they are feeling like the plan they put together addresses the main things. That's not to say that the Conservation Commission might not still want more, but I think that's been the process, so I think that's what they're really hoping is-
Right.
That it, it's kind of, at this point, kind of perfunctory in terms of what, you know, what everybody's gonna, what their needs are and how well they're being met, but hey-
You hope that's true, but you just never can speak for the committee.
Of course you can.
You don't know, right?
It's a committee process, right, absolutely, but I think the, the only point I'm making is, I think there's been a lot of preparation being, you know, done, and a lot of conversations that have been had as to kind of, you know, what are those things that, 'cause actually, Steve, Steve has made a, a point of saying that actually in some ways, it makes the situation at, at that location better, because of some of the improvements that get put in, you know, along the way.
Yeah, you're able to control the runoff and, and how the stuff flows in there, plus it goes into the catch basin to be spilt.
But again, you're right, it's a committee process, and we'll see what happens.
So, both of you are going to the meeting next, next week?
I will be going to-
And Lindsay.
Lindsay will be at the Conservation Committee, yep. I don't have a life, I can't wait to go to that meeting.
You must, I'm sure you're looking forward to this being done.
I'm looking forward to seeing the equipment drive up there and start working, and then I'll feel like we're, we're, we're getting something happening here.
I know.
It's a long process, but it feels like we're getting close, you know, it's just we're gonna get through a couple more steps here, and then, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very good, when we get it in there, it's gonna be a big improvement for playability.
Yeah, you pull in on a Friday night and those lights are on.
Yeah, it's, I mean, going into Manchester, I was just there last week, it is, even in the snow covered, it's still a beautiful facility.
Well, they, you know, they don't even lose games, my daughter played, she plays on a turf field done by Gale Associates, and they just plow it right off, they just, you know, they have a special thing, they just plow it off to the side and they're playing games down there, it's middle of February and they're playing games, so, I mean, it's cold, but there's no snow.
For people watching.
There's no snow.
We could put heating coils on it if we had another couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Sure, let's look into that. No, it's exciting, it definitely is an exciting.
It is, I mean, I can hardly wait to turn the vision into reality.
Yeah, and you even hear like the kids talking about it, like kids, they're excited.
I, I, I mean, I went to a basketball game the other night, had people asking me, kids asking me, you know, when's it coming, so, yeah, they know.
No, it is, it's exciting, and it is a, a very generous gift from the GAA that is most appreciated.
Well, it's from the people that their kids are out there, so, it's just, just taking the effort to put the money into one place, so it's the, like I said, it's, it's the people that are paying the registrations, that are gonna get the use out of it, yeah.
Yeah, for the CPC funds to be used.
Some of the people that have been paying for years aren't gonna get the use out of it, because their kids already went through, but that's the way it goes, I'm one of those people, but that doesn't matter.
Well, schedule some kind of an alumni game, John.
It's for the greater good, it's not a problem. I don't, I don't honestly, I don't even care, I just wanna see the kids out there and have a, a nice facility for the, the town to have, you know, when people came in, they say, wow, what a beautiful facility you have to play on here, and, you know, it really is, at this point, most towns have these now, I mean, if you drive around North Reading, Manchester, North Andover, I mean, all these towns, Andover, every town you go to is doing this type of a facility, so that, you know, they can play their games and get their stuff in and, and have a, you know, a good facility for the kids to play on, so I mean, just to stay competitive with the surrounding environments, Newburyport's putting one in, Triton's putting one in, so there's a lot of stuff that's happening with these fields.
I grew up in Melrose, and I remember, they put one in a while ago, and that was a big deal, like going by the field, it's, it's absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, they just redid their whole football complex.
It's gorgeous.
Yeah, it's nice.
And it will allow us to do a better job with our other fields, because we can rest them now, which we've never been able to do, so we can aerate them and, you know, fertilize So we can aerate them and, you know, fertilize them and, and, you know, it would be nice for people to come to Georgetown and say, wow, you know, the field's beautiful here.
You have grass on the top fields now, how'd that happen?
Well, we're, it's all in the vision, right?
Make a little money on them too. I know, do you think there will be an opportunity for that, like, with all the sports that we have going on, I know that was one of the things, okay, we can.
Well, in the summertime, if somebody here, I mean, you're gonna have a lot of time in the summers, I think, that, you know, when, you know, after, baseball's over by July, I mean, August, I mean, a lot of, I don't know, it seems to me there will be some room in there if you guys wanna put leagues in here and, on different nights and, and stuff like that, because, I mean, it's not gonna be a baseball game over there every single night with a two field, so I mean, it could be coordinated where you could have, you know, an, an adult league over there and try to raise money off of something like this.
Now, what about that baseball, um, summer program that they do, the camp, that's still popular?
The police, the police do that, so.
Right, but that field's not gonna, it's not gonna be.
No, they do it right here, yeah.
They could do that.
So, they should be ready by, oh, I don't know, it depends on what time, when, what year, if they're rolling.
Oh, no, for the, yeah, they might have to do this one on the, on the high school baseball field.
So that's where they would, that would be available, cause I know they use that field anyways, like, send some of the kids over, right?
Yeah, they could do it there.
They use both now, they use both now, but.
Because it's usually like right after Fourth of July, is that baseball program?
Yeah, it is, that's true, yeah.
I'm trying to think, this is April, May, June, this is supposed to be but done by the end of June, if everything, it's like.
It says, well, July twenty first.
Is that what they have?
Yeah.
The construction period's a hundred and twenty days, April fourteenth to July seventh.
Hundred and twenty, okay.
Yeah, I thought it was April to July.
It is a little longer than I thought, I thought it was gonna be ninety to a hundred days, but I guess it's twenty days longer, so.
Okay, and the next stack meeting, committee meeting is the tenth.
Right.
As far as I know, right, it's still Monday, March tenth.
Now Barbie does the meetings of the stack committee, so I think we should just stick them in the school committee packets.
Well, John was gracious enough to tell me that I don't have to do that anymore, because Lindsay, Lindsay does the minutes too, so I've been doing the minutes.
She's already keeping the minutes.
Oh, Lindsay does the minutes.
And then Lindsay did them last time, and I said, John, do we really need two?
She did.
Yeah, she's, she's doing the minutes, so I'm like, you know, if you're gonna do the minutes, there's no point in.
That's a good point. Barbie doing them, yeah, right, I, yes, I think, that's, is that the one, I think that's the one that I asked Laura to include, so I think that it is.
You commented how much you liked her minutes, so I figured they, since they, since they got yours stamped with approval, I didn't think you was in a problem.
I did like her minutes.
Don't you think her minutes are good? Are they better than mine?
No, they're a different format, Barbie, a different format, of course they're not better than yours.
Okay.
They're just different.
Okay, I'm just happy to be relieved of the duty.
Yes, I bet you are.
Um, does, do you have any questions?
No questions at all, we're good at questions and answers, that's our, that's our best thing, we're good at taking questions, I don't know about the answers, we try our best.
Well, I just really hope that the conservation hearing goes well on, on March, uh, sixth.
John, these aren't, these aren't related to this today, but they are related to the project later, um, we've been talking about it for a while too, I just wanted to say it again, um, that there will be some sort of signed agreement, um, between, um, you folks and the schools, that the future monies will.
Yes.
Usage. Oh, escrow agreement, yeah.
We're actually looking for two agreements, we're looking for a use agreement for the G A, for the fields, and we're looking for a money agreement.
Right, yeah, the selectmen, that was one of the requirements we had to agree to, so, I, I think actually.
That would come before the school committee, the, the use agreement.
But there was supposed to be, wasn't this?
We'll probably have paid all the money before we get that agreement, but that's okay.
No, actually, I thought the draft was pretty much final, it, cause Krista Franco had been going back and forth with a little subcommittee of the G A.
Right.
You're talking about the use agreement or the, the money agreement?
I'm talking about the use agreement.
Oh, okay.
Which would come to the committee for approval.
And the only other, and the only other item I had was that, um, and I've been talking about this, but that the turf, um, and, the turf is going to fall under the general contractor's responsibility for the one-year guarantee, so that if anything should go wrong.
They actually have eight-year.
They, they have an eight-year warranty.
Yeah, okay, but, so, but the general contractor would be who the school district would turn to for any issues with the turf.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's standard language.
You're not talking about the company, Rob, you're talking about the general contractor.
I'm talking about the general contractor, because, because the money is coming from you guys.
Who has the eight-year?
Is a turf warranty on the, on the, uh, there's an eight-year warranty on the turf.
On the, from, from, from the manufacturer.
But from the company.
From the manufacturing.
And what Rob's talking about is something different.
What, what, what I'm talking about is just that if a problem should come up with the turf field a year from now, um, which is typically the general contractor's time period, that the school district takes their concerns and the general, to the general contractor, and the general contractor's.
Lindsay ends with that question at the last meeting.
Lindsay did.
She has, she has, and that's why, and, I'm just saying it again and again, because I.
Yeah, I thought that. Yeah, okay, I think she did, I mean, I don't wanna try to quote exactly what she had, but I think.
That was at the last meeting, yeah, no, I know.
Schools understand, we want it in the minutes.
But she did say that it would, it would go to the, to the general contractor, yeah.
Yep, yep, that's all.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, I mean, we can inquire her again on March tenth, and I'm sure she will give us a.
It'll be in the specs, and, but they have.
Yeah, yeah, they write all that stuff in there, so, um, but we, we can check that if you wanna just go over it, I mean, wouldn't hurt to hash it over again, you know, just to, I don't wanna quote, try to quote exactly what she said, because I would, I'll butcher that, but, you know.
All right, no, it's exciting.
Sounds great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Administrative reports. So, the most important thing that we wanna discuss tonight, um, is the, the, have a magic discussion, and then there's a couple of school things I think are really important, so, I just wanted to be sure that you were aware that we had two students who received medals at the academic decathlon tournament that was held recently at North Reading. Actually, it was February first, it was a Saturday, um, and Michael Kelly and Ryan Bahar, you know, you know Ryan, maybe many of you know Michael as well, uh, received, um, a bronze medal in music, and Michael received an additional plaque, a recognition of having the overall highest score for the team.
Wow.
So I think it's important to congratulate these two young men, and, uh, I believe Diane Weldon is their advisor, and, you know, she gave up a Saturday to go with them. In fact, she's the one who let us know of the good news, so, congratulations to Michael and Ryan, and, um, to the school, because it's, it's great to have our students represented so well.
That's great, that's very exciting.
An academic endeavor, so.
Yes, indeed, and it is nice that she takes that time too, cause that's a lot to, to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely, and you know, the, you know, the more our children like Deca, more opportunities they can have to, to be out there with other peers, you know, gives them a good sense of, you know, kinda what, you know, what's, what's out there, you know, gives them comparison with, and we, and we always compete very well when we do that. Uh, so, congratulations again to these guys.
Okay, we're gonna.
Peter, Peter would be next.
Discuss the program of studies?
Yes, we are.
Hi, hello.
Hey, Peter. Okay.
Let's see.
I know that Mary Beth isn't here, and we would normally hear this from her, but I just wanna congratulate the, the boys' basketball team.
Oh, it's excellent.
That was a really exciting game, the other night, and they're playing Saturday at three.
Yeah.
They're playing on Saturday.
Saturday at three, and I, and I want everyone to know that we have very limited capacity, and so, uh, we only have three hundred and twenty seats to sell,
It's gonna be standing room only.
Show up early.
And when they're gone, they're gone.
Okay.
So we're trying to advertise that, so everyone knows, and, cause we have, we have Manchester to, uh, you know, accommodate also.
So what time will the gate be open, like the other night it was six fifteen, I think, right?
Two, one hour before the game, the M I A would not let us sell tickets in advance, cause we, we had this grand plan to do that, and we'd, you know, save a lot of disappointment for people that were coming, we, and we've had this in the past with some tournament games, where we had to turn people away, and it's not pretty, so.
Especially like if you sell it to all the Georgetown people, and then, you know, Manchester comes and they can't get in, that's.
Manchester people show up, right.
Yeah, so the word's out in Manchester, and, uh.
Two o'clock, the doors open. But you know what I thought was really nice, seeing the people that came in, there were a lot of younger, like mums and dads, but they're younger kids, and I thought that was really cool.
Yes, I thought the same thing. That play with, in the G A, yeah, that don't have kids that play in our, in our high school programs.
It was really nice, but those kids did great, so I wanna congratulate them.
Hopefully they'll go a long way.
It should be a good game, I asked Krista Franco today, we play them during the season, cause they're kind of our rival.
Yeah.
And we've won once and lost once, so it should be, and the other thing that I also asked Krista to pay attention to, the game the other day, that a lot of people were crowding around the doorway, they didn't come in, you know, and I said, we really have to say to people, you have to sit.
Yeah, we.
Well, Mr. Larson did try to do that, he was good about doing it.
Cause there were quite a few people, places up at the very top, but it's a, you know, it is a pain, I know, to climb over everybody, it's no easy way to get up there, but.
Everyone has to be seen.
We have to sit everybody this time, I think, because I do think it could be a, a problem.
I'll try to get there early.
Yes.
My boys were at the last game, and it was very, very exciting, they tell me.
Yes, and the blue crew was, and the blue crew was there in force, and cheering loudly, it was nice.
Great atmosphere. Okay, um, so I, I'll just summarize this, uh, to spare you going through every little line and things, but, uh, we'll start with the middle school. And, uh, actually for both schools, since we, we have a new, uh, mission statement, a, a statement of core values and beliefs, we're, we're replacing the old mission statement and, and inserting that. As far as, um, English goes, we just wanted to let you know that we are updating some of the books, taking some off, putting some on. Um, math has, uh, um, really, um, this, this curriculum, this, this middle school book hasn't been updated for four years, so, uh, some of these things that I'm gonna be talking about, like the math changes, were implemented last year, and so simply, this, this is a description of some of those things. Probably the biggest change in the middle school is, um, the insertion of, um, all of the technology and engineering, uh, content that kids are responsible for in the M C A S, so we were only delivering about a third of that. So, um, we'll be coming to you, uh, if, this is step one, if step one goes well, we'll be coming with, uh, to you with step two with a book for approval, uh, for technology engineering, and this will become a mandatory course, ev- every eighth grader, every seventh and eighth grader, uh, almost every seventh and eighth grader now takes tech ed, but it's going to be very different, it's going to be technology and engineering, this, the entire curriculum, and we're gonna try to, um, deliver this full-year course in three, uh, quarters. So one quarter will be delivered during the, um, enrichment block in science, so on the seventh grade enrichment block, what they're doing now, we're gonna replace that with phase one of this technology and engineering, and then seventh grade technology and engineering class, uh, will be phase two, and then the eighth grade. So some kids, that is delivered, it, so this is a mandatory science course that's going to be delivered above and beyond the regular science curriculum, and will be delivered in the special block, the non-academic block, so kids will not, everyone has to take it. Some kids don't take that right now, uh, not many, but some, but everybody's going to have to take that.
But it is academic.
Yes, yes.
The students will receive grades, not just pass, fail.
Yes, yep, mm-hmm, and, um, that, that's about it, um, for the middle school, there, there's, uh, uh, you know, I looked at going through this book, we've been teaching theater arts up there for at least three years, I didn't see a course description in there, so, we updated that, um, we did some, there is, um, a line that were kind of a disclaimer under music, that, um, we want parents to understand that, uh, and we certainly don't wanna discourage this, but they do have to understand, if you take, if you take band or chorus, that is for a full year, and it's going to limit the amount of non-academic courses that you take, so, um, we don't, we did wanna put that statement in there.
That's good.
Yeah, because we had some issues with that that weren't clear, and, um.
Yeah, that's good to clarify, and my parents know.
Yeah.
It's a dilemma, right, because we have, we have such a strong band program and choral program, and it's, it's just a great, you know, you talk about the multiple intelligences, it's just a great thing, and, you know, sometimes if it means that students also love art, and they can't necessarily get an art course, you know, they, they say, well, I don't wanna take band, and, you know, they, so it's hard when they have to feel like they have to give up something that.
They love.
And ultimately, it, it really benefits the whole school to have a really vibrant music program as well, so it, it is, it's very hard, even though, it's just not enough periods in the day, that's the problem.
Yeah, it is, okay, so that's the middle school, and I, I don't know how you wanna handle this, if you wanna vote on that now, and then go on to the high school, or let me do the whole thing, and, whatever you wish.
Can I just ask, I was looking at the grade, grade eight algebra, change to math level two.
Yeah.
And it says, students who successfully learn the content of this course are generally ready to enroll in Algebra One college prep. But now aren't eighth graders currently taking algebra?
We're moving, we're moving away from that, because that is, that is not, we, we moved to that, how many years ago, four, five? Where every seventh grader took pre-algebra, and every eighth grader took, took algebra, and that is not in line with the Common Core now.
It isn't?
No.
I mean, because it sounds like now we're lowering the standards.
Um, I, I wouldn't look at it that way, um, the, that, the whole concept of doing that was with great debate, because, um, the con end of that was that there are many kids that aren't ready for that, and we're, we're pushing that on them, so, the, I mean, uh, we have to be very precise with aligning our curriculum, or our kids aren't gonna do well, so, the, the test is based on, on the Common Core.
On what you're gonna put.
Yeah.
What about the, the students who are really ready for algebra?
That's what I was gonna say, what about the kind of really giving them kids?
Well, they, they do ha- they do have that, they will have that, and, you know, we've, we've had students, the beauty of having a middle high school is that if someone is ready for, um, higher-level courses, they can take it, so, um, I have a student right now, uh, in the high school that took high school math classes in the middle school.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're always gonna challenge kids, and we're never gonna hold anybody back, and we're, we're lucky, cause we're in the same building.
Yeah, so I mean, I remember my, my oldest, for some reason, was not able to take algebra in eighth grade, so he had to take it in ninth grade, but then he had the goal of doing AP Calculus in twelfth grade, so he had to double up in math to get there.
Yeah.
So I'm just, which he has, but I'm just concerned about those students that are really able to do, and, you know, ready to do algebra in eighth grade.
They'd be in level one.
But Peter, may, may, maybe I'm, let me just see if I'm following that, cause it is, so, are you saying that it, that there's not gonna be any Algebra One in eighth grade?
No, there is, everybody in the eighth grade is going to get some algebra, but it's not, not everybody's going to get all algebra.
Okay.
But would, if there was a group of students who were ready to take an Algebra One class in the eighth grade?
Yes.
A class of kids, would that likely be scheduled? Or would they, would they have to do this, this course that you're talking about here? Cause what I think Pam is saying is that right now, there's, there, there are a lot of, well, a number of kids are taking Algebra One in the eighth grade that are handling it.
Yeah, that, that's, I know kids that are getting eighth grade.
And, and her worry is that if we don't offer that, we change it to this class, and now we make, it's the norm for kids to take algebra in the ninth grade.
It's all algebra, it's all algebra-based, but there are other mathematical concepts that they weren't getting, that they're being tested on.
Okay.
Like some geometry and stuff like that, so that, it's not so much that we're not teaching algebra, it's that we're adding the things that, that the kids are being tested on.
Okay.
But is it the same rigor of al-, what's in that new course, is it the same level of rigor as the kids are getting in Algebra One around the algebra?
I would say, yes.
But then they're also, see, what, what Peter's saying is, when you take like an Algebra One course, it's obviously all algebra, but if you look at the Common Core standards, there's a lot of other types of math, that if they're just taking Algebra One, they're not getting them.
Right, geometry, trigonometry.
The, maybe if we use a kind of a backward down model.
It's a more integrated course, that's what I think he's talking about.
The kids that are ready in the eighth grade for algebra will be moving on to geometry in their freshman year.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to.
So they're not stuck.
Right.
Right. So they're not stuck, they're not gonna have to study algebra again, if they're really familiar with the concepts.
Right, and that's how it used to be, before we made that move, the, 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 the kids that were really ready, took algebra in the eighth grade, and took honors geometry in the ninth grade, and that's still gonna happen.
But what Peter's saying is, in order to make sure the kids have exposure to all of the standards across the mathematical domains, in eighth grade,
Right.
Cause they don't take algebra, and then another math with all the other standards, they take math once, so the program has to move to more of an integrated model.
Okay.
With still, I have the emphasis on what those concepts of algebra that the kids are required to know and be able to do are included.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, and, and, yes, thank you for explaining that, I.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a, that's a great question, and I'm sure that that will be a question that a number of parents will have, so, if we get the trial run explaining that.
Any other questions on the middle school?
Yes, I just wanted to discuss this honor roll, um, issue that we have here, um, an update requirement to no grade lower than a B.
Yeah. Um, that's been in place for a long time.
I'm really concerned about the students who struggle and work so hard for a B minus, and, you know, feel that, and the traditional understanding of honor roll is if you get something bet- and better grades than a C, and I, you know, it just, it's, I'm concerned about those students who feel that they deserve to be on the honor roll, they've worked really hard, they've avoided the Cs.
I'm, I'm not, I am not at, I'm not bringing this as a change to you, because this, this policy, this B policy was voted several years ago at the school committee.
What's the justification, what's the reasoning for this?
It was not updated in this book.
I was not on the committee at that point.
But we can revisit that if you want, I'm just.
I would like to revisit it.
I'm, I'm just telling you that, I'm not bringing that as a change, I'm, this, I'm bringing it as an update.
Okay.
But I, I think the, I think the hard part, I think the hard part is, well, what does the honor roll mean? Because in some cases, what you have is you have schools where grades are kind of inflated, and it, it really doesn't mean anything to get on the honor roll, because everybody gets on the honor roll.
Right, right.
Right, so is the honor roll a thing you get because you show good effort, and, but your achievement isn't high, or is the honor roll that there's a certain expectation that it's a certain level of performance, you know, that's the question, right?
It's, it almost seems as if like this resolution is because we think we have grade inflation, which I, I don't think we do, but if we did, this does not strike me as the way to, you know, to a- approach it, that, that, that's a whole nother question of whether we have that or not.
That, that committee, I remember that discussion.
I'm talking about, from the students' perspective, you know, what's best for the students.
Right, but the committee at the time felt that it was important to say that there was a certain academic standard, that, and, 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 and a, and a, a B, which was a.
Right, above C.
A B, and they.
Eight, what is a B, like an eighty-five?
A B is a, down to an eighty-three.
Down to an eighty-three.
And they felt that a B minus wasn't really a B, wasn't a full B.
But it is, yeah, but a B minus.
Well, we have another interesting thing, you know, at the end.
A B minus is not a C.
But if you look, we have, we have pluses in, in the, in the regular grade and a minus, however, in, in our school, both schools, a D minus is a failing grade.
Right.
There aren't a lot, a lot of schools that I'm familiar with that, that have that, usually, if fifty-nine is an F.
I'm not crazy about that either.
So.
I'm not crazy about that either.
So if, when we look at it, maybe we should look at the whole thing.
Yeah, I, I would, I know, can we do that?
At the appropriate time, you can revisit that.
Because I have the same question, I did, um, send Peter an email when I got that as well, and he explained to me, oh, this was already approved, I'm just, it just wasn't in the book.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Right, so you would, so they approved it, and I'm like, oh, because I felt the same way, I'm like, a B minus to me is not a C, it should be on the honor roll. So it seems like we have.
I think, I think you have a difference of opinion.
Yeah, no, I doubt, I, I see that, but that's what I love.
And the one thing we have to be. But the one thing we have to be careful about, though, is that it doesn't depend on the, you know, a few committee members that get on for a couple of years, and then it changes, and it, it sees us back. So we, we have to kind of decide as a community what, you know, what, what we value, and I think it's a broader conversation than just the committee, I think, you know, we have to look at, you know, wh- what the faculty feels, you know, what the, you have to look at what the administration feels, you know, I mean. You know, I mean, I think it's, it that's, honor roll is a hot button issue in every, in every town and every school.
I mean, naturally, we wanna reward effort above grades per se.
But maybe there's other ways to do that, Pam, that's the point.
There are many ways to do that, yes, yes, but I still, you know, I'm thinking of those students that are really trying their darndest and
Yeah, no, I literally know who you're talking about.
You know, putting in a lot of, a lot of effort and they're so proud that they, you know, avoided the C.
But sometimes it's also motivating for kids to say, oh, man, I just missed it. We've all been in that situation, right, where we've some some line has been drawn in the sand and we didn't quite make it, right? So sometimes one of two things happens, right, either they give up and say, oh, I'm never gonna do it, or they say, hmm, what do I have to do to kind of push myself a little bit more too, so?
Sure, and.
I don't know, it's not an easy discussion that will probably resolve today, but.
I guess the C experience, and C stands for change and there's definitely, you know, you move on from there and you.
Yeah. Well, remember, C is supposed to mean average. I mean, C is, C is supposed to be, C isn't supposed to be a bad thing, right?
That's my personal definition of C is that C stands for change.
But but you know what I mean, I mean, that's that's the problem, you know, it's very hard to have common definitions because everybody has their own, we all went to school, right? So we all, we all wanna repeat the things we really liked and change the things we didn't. And, you know, that's why we just have to make whatever decisions we have to make, we have to make with, you know, very, you know, very good research and really understand why we're doing it and you know, what the what the repercussions are, you know, one way or the other.
So maybe we could further consider how to make this a community discussion and could, yeah.
I think so.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to, so my piece on that, that's like, I have that.
Well, it's good to put on the table.
Peter, this is, this is a lot easier. Update requirement to no grade lower than a B, but then it's in parentheses, not a B.
What does that mean?
It just confused me.
You mean not a B minus, is that what it says?
It says not a B in parentheses after.
Under honor roll.
Under honor roll.
The honor roll discussion, it's just a clarification.
I think it sounds.
Update required to grade, to no grade lower than a B, not, it should be calmer.
Not a B minus.
Not a B minus. Thank you.
And it would be interesting to to really figure out, like, what do other schools do?
Oh, I've looked, I told Peter, I looked, I was on.
It's all over the place, yeah.
So there's no consensus there that all go.
The internet one day all goes. But I think, I think it. Except that there is a traditional understanding that the kids are.
I think it's a community issue, I mean, I think it's something that.
Well, that's, it's a common, it's a common practice of what our kids here understand, right, that's, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I.
A lot of schools use GPAs.
Yes, and that's not even, that's not any better. Some people love that, but I don't.
More in high school?
No.
We're talking middle school.
Um, high school.
High school, usually.
Yeah.
Our um, software company, our student management software company has been trying to get us to go to GPAs forever because they they don't really, they weren't, they really had to tweak their program to do the honor roll the way we like it. So.
Some some middle schools don't believe in honor rolls, 'cause 'cause that's where you get all these kids that now, you know, your, middle school's supposed to be the place where you're not supposed to be differentiating kids, right? Everybody's supposed to be welcome and it's supposed to be a place where they're growing and they're aware of their self-image.
Why do we do honor rolls at the middle school?
Uh, you see, this isn't an easy issue.
It's a culture issue, I think. It has to do with the culture and every school, every community has its own culture and that culture is influenced by many, many things. And so I think for the school committee to sit here and arbitrarily decide what we want as a committee, I think really is disempowering to the people who are giving the grades and disrespectful of them and and of the culture that they're trying to create as a team. I see a school as a team that consists of, certainly the parents in the community are part of that team, but there's the professionals who's charged with educating the students. And they have to come to some agreement about what they believe in that they're trying to feed the students and so I I just, I'm I'm a little bothered by this conversation without those professionals in the room.
It's also interesting to think what the kids, what the kids would say, because you know what, I bet there's a faction of kids that would say a B minus isn't, isn't a high enough standard, right?
Well, that's what I hear from kids.
And so it's, so it it. But it's just, but it's interesting.
I I I haven't said much, I just would echo what you just said, in a degree.
Yeah. Well, I, just to.
Yeah.
Just to say, I don't think anyone's trying to disrespect.
Lower the standard.
No, I. You or the teachers in this district, but I don't think that it's wrong in the committee wanting to know when we approve something.
Oh, absolutely.
Why it is, and and there is, you know, i- if we have questions on it, we can certainly, you know, bring it up and ask that if you looked into further and I, you know, I personally would would like to do that.
High school, Peter.
So do we wanna vote on this?
Oh, did you, did you wanna just approve the the middle high school program studies or do you wanna do a middle separate?
Yeah. No, we'll do both, together.
Okay, 'cause they add two different.
The way we have a little orange.
One more quick question.
Yeah.
Um, sixth grade, um, okay, we'll do it.
Yeah, we did have a little orange note separate.
Have we decided on on a book to replace the book that's gonna be taken out?
On which grade?
Sixth grade, it says remove.
Yeah, that.
One book and.
That was a book they really weren't using, so that.
But we haven't, we haven't made a, no replacement yet.
Right. Yeah, they're using, they're using several books.
Yeah, and I think additional books are being purchased.
Okay.
Or the ones that are, have not been, they're 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 streamlining the whole um uh, trajectory of the novels that they're using in line with the Common Core and the whole extended texts. So I think that that was one that they just didn't feel was as appropriate and it wasn't one that they were using a lot. So I think they're moving more to the ones that are better aligned.
Okay.
So they can have a little bit more.
And again, uh, this is kind of three years worth of updates all, all in one, so my guess is they weren't using that for a couple of years, so we're just trying to.
Yeah, I can say, I don't think I've ever heard of it.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the middle school program of studies as presented by Mr. Peter Lucia.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. High school, um. The the first um, course is um, a truly co-curricular class. And and I I want it to be understood that there will be two teachers in there at once, a social studies teacher and an English teacher. Um, this this course is, and I think I can do it with the resources that I have, it's very important, so I'm not asking for additional resources.
You're looking at me, Peter.
Um.
'Cause he knows I'll ask him to redirect.
This, uh, one of the things that I'm asking the committee tonight is to increase our um, social studies requirement to a four-year requirement. So, uh, there are, there are many reasons for that and then probably the most important reason is that one of the standards for NIASC is, um, they, NIASC, um tries to encourages uh, heterogeneous grouping. And one of the standards in the leadership uh, standard, one of the indicators in the leadership standard is for kids to take at least one heterogeneous core curriculum class. So, um, that means that everyone has to take it. And the only way we can really do that is to to offer um, enough classes uh, and uh, require enough of this to happen in the uh, eleventh and twelfth grade. So, to make a long story short, it trend, the best way to do it is to have four years of social studies because that's really where um, the only academic area where we really have true electives, academic electives uh, in the core. Um, so, I asked Mr. Hastings, the department chair, to come up with some, you know, we're we're gonna assume that this will go through and that we should offer at least another elective course that would be, that kids would be interested in. So he came up with this film and history course. And um, I said, well, that sounds good, but we do, uh, we do have like a a film and writing course in the English department that's very populous in literacy. So, um, I I I said, I want you to talk to Ally Viera, the department head of English, to make sure that no one's stepping on each other's uh, toes. So I brought him into my office and as they were, they were talking, this bulb went off in my head and said, this is the perfect opportunity to really do a a co-curricular class. What if we put them together? And um, I had to do a little dance, show him how to step out of the box and 'cause they weren't so thrilled about it at the beginning, but I I I think they see, see the light now. Uh, anyway, we kind of merged those two uh, ideas together to come up with this course. And I think kids will be knocking the doors down to take it. Um, they will have to declare, uh, because you can't double dip with credits, they'll have to declare if it's gonna count towards social studies or English credit. And um.
That will be interesting.
And then we'll go from there, but but a lot of schools um, have some courses where there are two teachers from two different areas in there. Um, and I think it's, it's really worth a try and I think when NIASC comes in two years, they're gonna really look highly upon this.
Now, with two teachers, does that mean that the amount of students taking it could be like?
No.
So it would still be the the average?
Yep, probably be.
Yeah, in a lot of schools, that's exactly what they do, they 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 take thirty-five, forty kids.
Yeah, I would think so, right, but we're gonna keep, okay.
We don't have a space big enough for thirty-five or forty kids, some of our classrooms would accommodate for that.
Right, we'd, yeah, we're probably, thirty's probably the tops we can get in there. And it would be a semester course, so we'll run two of them and um.
I think it sounds very interesting.
So I I I wanna put that on the table, but there is a plan B and which I'll get to at the end, but I don't need to bring it up. Well, I'll tell you what it is. If you're not gonna go for that, then I, then I'm gonna propose the the social studies course that was uh, based on film, before I put the two together. So, I don't need that if if you accept this.
Do you have two faculty members who are interested in working together on this course?
Yeah, yep. Um, the other, the other brand-new course is um, uh, an engineering course. Again, when we started to look into um, the technology and engineering uh, frameworks and what we wanted to do in the middle school, we we found that there's, you know what, there's a great high school course that we would like to to offer too. And um that's engineering in the future, so that's a a really interesting course where it's a combination of technology and engineering and science and and life science and uh, put all together, uh, we think will be a very popular course, so we would like to add that.
And that, and that's very consistent with um where the, um, what do they call them, next generation science standards are going. Um, and you know, all this work with Park is all about college and career readiness. And this is, this is a a way to kind of create a pathway for for students to be um, maybe thinking in that, in that way. So, it's a good opportunity. We don't have anything like it right now.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just help me understand or or explain a little bit how engineering fits in with science and mathematics?
Um.
That's where they, that's where they put it in, they put science and technology, it's.
Oh, you mean, uh.
He's wondering how it's, how it's not, it's, I'm wondering how it's not its own.
Yes.
Its own standard.
Yeah, oh, oh, okay.
Yes.
Um. It's uh it it really, it goes, it goes back to um when they, when they did the uh, the frameworks over in Massachusetts and that's kind of where it fell in the frameworks. It used to be its own, uh, it it grew from from our traditional shop woodworking, things like that, to a technology-based course and with some engineering standards. And and then it moved in, the state moved it into the science realm, science and technology.
Thinking skills, inquiry, you know, um, problem solving, which I think is is a little bit more consistent with the.
Yeah, that would, that would be more consistent, that helps, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what it is. You know, it's the design process, so you know, I would expect in a program like this is they would look at, you know, pu- putting kids in real-world situations and having them work on solving it. You know, a lot of schools go to things like robotics.
Right.
Where they, you know, it, not because it's fun to do, but because it really does get, it's a different, it's a different thinking process.
Yeah, one of the most interesting things of this course, they they're gonna take like, human problems and, you know, apply engineering and technology to to solve them.
That human problem, right there.
Yeah, it would be, that that would would be something like that, you know, maybe we have, uh, you know, like a a water problem and and what kinds of technologies can we use to to help that and stuff like that, so it should be really good.
It sounds really very interesting.
And we have a teacher for that?
Well.
Well, that's part of it.
It's part of the the halftime teacher that we're gonna add.
They'll have, they should have a little bit of time in their schedule.
To do that, yeah.
Do the course.
So we're thinking that 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 person would teach, um, you know, this course in the high school and the rest of the time in the middle school. Okay, um, the art department, there really isn't anything new, they, uh, every several years they come and they change the name of the classes. I don't know why they do that, they drive me crazy, to be honest. Um, uh, there's some wording in math. Uh, the big one is uh, social studies adding adding a a fourth year requirement, so a twenty-credit requirement. Um, and to be honest, if if this engineering class goes very well, we might be back at some point with science 'cause that would leave only science that doesn't have a four-year requirement for the core areas. Um, uh.
And the DESE makes a strong recommendation that they believe it should be four, four years of all the core subjects.
I'm surprised it hasn't been already.
They don't, they don't, they don't, yeah, I'll be, insist on it, but that that's a strong recommendation.
Most, most kids.
And most kids take them anyway, right?
Yeah, and all, almost all kids take four years of social studies now, already.
I would think, yeah.
So, um.
And I would say a good many probably take four years of science.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Uh, just some, some tweaking in in the book with uh, taking some courses that we haven't really run for a while, just taking them out of there. We wanna, uh, our most uh, popular music elective has become gi- uh, guitar. And we wanna add a second level of that guitar too. Um, theater arts is, uh, we wanna, um, the kids that are involved in theater arts under the current structure um, hit hit a wall because they're they're, they could be done in in two years, really taking it. It's more, it's more, it's kind of like chorus, you take it for four years, but you call it chorus, you take it four times. So, we're just trying to be, uh, afford that same opportunity to kids that are in theater arts. So, we're just kind of lev- making different layers of of theater arts. And so we wanna uh, add a uh, an advanced acting to the, to the repertoire. And then that's just some wording things. Um, one thing I I wanna mention to you, that um, this is a great dilemma all the time in in uh, in French because um we could really offer five years of French, the way our our French program has grown over the last um, five or six years. And it it's a resource problem because we only have one French teacher. So already, she she doesn't teach exploratory in the seventh grade, we have a f- a a Spanish teacher doing that. So, so.
She doesn't have the time.
Right, she doesn't have the, you know, she can only teach five classes. So, um, this year, there are fourteen kids in French Four and most of them probably wanna move to French Five. So, uh, we used to have French Five in the book a long time ago, we we were never able to run it. Um, so we removed it. So, I just want to um, put it on the table now, I I don't wanna present it, French Five again, 'cause I don't know if I can run it. But if if I get the interest and I can figure out how to do it, um, I would like to offer that to to those kids that that wanna have French Five.
So when you said you couldn't offer it before, because it, there was no, um, there wasn't enough kids that wanted to do it before?
Um, when, both, when there was, I didn't have the resource.
Now there is? Okay.
And and the, it ju- we almost lost French.
Yeah, French was.
I remember.
So, when when Mary Hayes came, came to our school, she really rejuvenated the program.
I remember.
And so now the numbers are very strong, but I mean, I mean, the answer to this problem is. But, I mean, I mean, the answer to this problem is to hire a French, Spanish-certified person, but they simply are not out there. So, um.
What, someone that does both?
Usually it's one or the other.
Yeah, that has a license in both.
Does the exploratory, they know how to speak both? In seventh grade, or enough to, right, enough to get through that exploratory?
Well enough. Well enough. And, maybe that experience is leading to the point where maybe someone could handle Level One of French. So I, I have to see how those numbers work out, and um, that would have to be two different, uh, people. Amanda Gerard teaches exploratory right now, and, and she's our AP Spanish teacher. It would have to be somebody different, because you can only teach one, one out of, one class out of your area of certification.
Do we have AP French?
No.
We do not.
No, but if, if this.
Why wouldn't we do AP French instead of French V?
Well, we're not ready for that, because, because you have to, we would wanna go that route eventually. But you have to build up to that, and you have to, um, the College Board has to approve the, uh, the course, the syllabus.
But could kids in fourth, fourth, French IV and V take AP? I'm, I'm, who, what?
You'd have to go through Level Four.
So, kids that are in, doing Four, are they sophomores and juniors, or what, what are they generally?
Jun, juniors, Level Four. So, and that's what happens, because you have Level One in the middle, in the eighth grade. And when you get to, if you don't have an AP program, we only have an AP program in Spanish, then when you're a senior, there's no language for you to take. So, lots of seniors that are interested will take Mandarin One, or, or something like that.
What, what, what do the academics, with all the languages that are out there in the world, where does, where does French, you know, as a language?
I'm a convert, Rob, I wanna tell you, because I had that same question, and, and I actually, I, I was really not in favor of, you know, continuing with French, because of, uh, you know, the dwindling numbers, and then we looked into the relevancy, but when you, when you really study that, a lot of people, uh, speak French in the, uh, we saw that in the Olympics, that, 'cause that was, they did something in English and French and, and something else, so the, the three big languages.
But, so, so, I mean, I'm just thinking of, of, of China, and I'm thinking of, you know.
That's why we did Mandarin.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking of the, the, the different, it just doesn't seem like.
Most schools, most schools have French, if you're, if the core, right, have Spanish-French, some have got Mandarin. Now bigger schools have multiple languages, will have German.
But, see, I always thought Italian was big.
Italian, but it's, it's really rare that you have, that schools are big enough to have that many languages.
Yeah, everybody has French, everybody has French and Spanish.
And then a lot have added Mandarin, because, you know, obviously the economy's on the Pacific Rim, right, so you, you know, that's.
But what are the numbers for the Mandarin, for the enrollment in Mandarin?
Um, off the top of my head, uh, they're, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
You know, uh, they, they, uh, we have, uh, at least one level, uh, I mean, one class a level, and um.
Through four years, right?
Yeah, there's, there's been some, the turnover is kind of, uh.
Well, we, we've had trouble with the staff and the teacher.
Part, part with the, the staffing was an issue there, yeah.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
It's hard to find a Mandarin teacher.
It's very hard to find them, yeah.
And sometimes you can find a Mandarin teacher who, who's a native speaker, but then it's hard, the English is, is still challenging, right, so it.
I interviewed all summer long, and could not find a candidate that I was comfortable with, and um.
Well, I've heard great things about it.
Yeah, well, at the last minute, she came out of nowhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just about to offer it to somebody else, and I got an email, and, you know, she was right around the corner, she lived in, uh, in, locally, and, uh, and, uh, I almost slipped. And, uh, she was a, a teach, she was teaching in another school, so we were so lucky.
We were so lucky.
So, um, the, the numbers are decent with that.
Okay, that's good.
So, um, I, I did wanna put that out on the table, so I, I would like to run it if I can. And, uh, you know, I, I'll let you know what, how that, I should know in a, you know, a couple of months, when we really get deep into the scheduling and I have everything all figured out.
I didn't get that last page in my packet for some reason, mine stopped at social studies, dear, so, these, these are all new to me.
So you're missing two pages.
Yeah, this stuff is, is new to me.
I just have a, a question about the difference between modern issues and contemporary affairs. Is modern issues gonna go more into global, international?
Um.
Issues?
Modern issues is, uh.
History.
It's, what we're trying to do, um, see, one of the problems that we have, um, when we're, when we're scheduling and trying to fill everyone's schedule, is, um, obviously, we, we have limits, and, and we give priority to upperclassmen, so, for example, digital video is probably, uh, most, um, popular elective. Well, everybody that signs, everybody in the, the fourth grade signs up for it, we can't accommodate that, so we wanna make sure that you have it before you leave, so we start with the seniors, and go to the juniors and stuff like. To make a long story short, lots of times, there's nothing left for freshmen to take anymore, for electives, 'cause everything's all filled. So, um, what we have been doing is, uh, we've been allowing them to take social studies electives, even though they are really supposed to be for juniors and seniors. So, we're kind of taking that contemporary affairs course and dividing it, uh, in half with the, um, the modern issues for the upperclassmen, and the contemporary affairs for, um, the freshmen and sophomore. So, I would say that it's just a more mature, uh, approach to, um.
More in-depth and.
Contemporary issues, yeah.
Global.
Yeah.
Global. Thank you.
Okay, so what are we gonna, so, what are we gonna do about the social studies, the, um, do we discuss that now, whether you wanna?
Yep.
Do the, the dual?
Right, do you wanna approve the program of studies with the dual course in it, or do you wanna put, put in the thing at the very back, right?
Hi. Thoughts? You know, I'm. I think, I, I, I think it's interesting that, um, you, I think it's great that you have two faculty members that are, that are willing to work that closely, because to me, it would be like, well, who would be the lead teacher? Or would it be, yeah, like, I, I don't know, though.
But I think it offers students.
Mister Murphy is here, if, I, I'd love to hear from him, seeing that he's an English teacher.
Just one question is that, I think that, my guess is that most, uh, of the educators in the building would be in favor of a co-curricular model, because they've probably benefited, they've benefited from one themselves in their own schooling, whether it be graduate courses or whatever it be. I think some reservations come when, how, like, you bring up, like, how it's implemented. So this is something that we'd have to probably negotiate, because if we're talking about job sharing, um, who's responsible for grades?
Right. Both teachers are responsible for grades.
There's a lot of things that I'm sure go into it that we don't think of.
So I think, yes, so I think, you know, I don't know if it's something we wanna consider after the fact, if we can sit down, I know Carol, you have your monthly meeting with Joe.
Yes, I do.
Kind of iron out some of those details.
Yeah, we talk about that, yeah.
Those are just some of the, you know, some of the basic concerns.
We are, we are doing this in, um, in the, well, throughout with, with our special ed staff. So, in our language-based program, they're co-taught, there's two teachers in there, or a teacher and a, uh.
Special educator?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think it offers students something really, but, I mean, in addition to the content of the course, and how content can vary when it's delivered from two different perspectives by two, two different people, there's also so much emphasis on teamwork and collaboration and cooperation in so many professions that students might be considering. And, when you're a student, you, even though I know to run, a, a school runs on teamwork and collaboration and cooperation, if it runs well, that's often behind the scenes, students don't see it, this is an opportunity for them to really see it in the classroom, and, um, and that's just the kind of learning that's not part of the curriculum, but that's going on all the time for them in schools, is how, you know, how people operate in the real world in their jobs, I think it's a great, it's a great idea.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely interested in, but, but how would we go about doing that, like, if it, is it something that the union would be involved with, in terms of the questions like Mister Murphy had said?
We'd certainly talk about and answer, you know, answer questions about that, but I, I think it's, you know.
But that wouldn't have to be done before we.
When you put it in the program of studies, it, you know, some things in the program of studies don't always run.
Yeah, everything's pending budget and resources.
So it's, it's really, it's really conceptual, right?
An interest, right?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I think the, the biggest reason to consider it at this point is that we are gonna have a visit from Niasse. We are gonna have to do a self-study pretty soon, that the teachers are gonna be very involved in, and, you know, I, I can't think of anything that, that, you know, has been brought up that we haven't been able to work out between the administration and the teachers, I mean, it, it's really been.
Yeah, I mean, the concept in, that, of co-curricular classes is, is not, just didn't come out of the air, because we did our pre-study, our pre-self-study, and that came up in like, three areas, 'cause we really only have one course that's really cross-curricular, and that's our, um, our research course, that's done with the business department and the social studies department.
It's not an unusual, a, a lot of schools will do something called an American Studies class, and that's a, usually a double block, two teachers with a double block. But it allows, let's say you're doing the Holocaust, and, you know, you want kids reading Diary of Anne Frank. You know, you, it's linking curriculum content together, so that kids have a, a greater, you know, connection, you know, and, and there's a, a greater depth. It's not all sort of people doing a great job in their, in their areas, and then how does it all link together? You know, so this gives an opportunity, it's, to provide those direct linkages between the two disciplines. Right, so I would imagine there's quite a bit of writing in this class, I imagine there's quite a bit of, um, you know, looking at the concept, historical concepts through literature, and, you know, literature through historical concepts, you know, so I think it's, it's got the potential to be something that's really interesting, I think. And, you know, I certainly urge you to look at it, and I have complete confidence, you know, working with the, the teachers' union, you know, especially if we have a couple of teachers who are interested in it, you know, then that gives them more motivation and impetus to try to come up with a solution to how it might work well. And, you know, we don't have to run, if it doesn't work, we can always eliminate it or not run it next year, right, I mean, it doesn't, nothing is forever. It's just, this seems like an opportune time to get it in, and then work it for a year, even before we have the self-study, right? So we, you know, by the time a visiting team came, if it was really working the way we hope, we'd be, we'd be rolling around for three years, right? It'd be like part of the practice, right, and who knows, we might wanna expand it to something else. But this issue in high schools of interdisciplinary teaching is sort of novel, sort of novel. Many teachers will integrate content in their own classroom, but two distinctly, you know, two important disciplines coming together and really looking at things in an integrated way is, is, is different. So, I, I would encourage you to, you know, give it a shot, and I, I'm confident we can work out whatever the questions or concerns would be, okay?
There's lots of good arguments for it.
Yeah, no, definitely, yeah, I think it's interesting to see it, what do you think?
I'm on board.
Shall we move to approve, okay?
Uh, just before we go to that, um, I just wanna come back, and I'm sorry, to the, um, science, the adding the course, the engineering, the future. And I'm just, um, I'm struggling with the title of Engineering the Future, and I'm struggling with the emphasis on engineering throughout the, all of the descriptions. The design process is fundamentally not engineering. Engineering is more of a linear process, and it's the, it's the art that, the creative process, the art process, that if you, if this is about engineering the future, or you have number two, enhancing student ability to use the engineering design process, um, and then when I turn it over, it says, includes the job of the engineer, of the engineer, the design process, urban planning and building sustainable communities. Urban planning, building sustainable communities, the design process is, it's, engineering only gets you the first step. And it seems like this class, which is really, potentially really exciting, is missing the art of the process, of the design process. And whether that's represented by, um, uh, fine artists, whether it's represented by, um, architects as a profession. You, you said like, that would be a good example, that project, water. The engineering design process will lead you from A to B to C to D, to come up with a resolution for the design. That's one level of design at the engineering level. The next level is you say, okay, I've resolved that, now what more can this be? Maybe this thing turns into a spiral jetty that solves the same water problem, but is truly a sustainable community, da, 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 da. So there's, there's something in the, in this class description that's fundamental to the design process that I feel is missing. And I have no idea if what I'm saying is relevant to this at all right now.
I, I can tell you the name in the description comes from the textbook that, that Sharice Clatherton is promoting here. So I believe that's the name of the book.
But I think what Rob is saying is that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because the textbook's a tool.
Yeah.
We have to make sure that what we're using the textbook for is really what we want the kids to be learning.
It, it, yes, yes.
Sounds to me, Robert, dare I say this, it's another interdisciplinary class, one that overlaps with the class from the arts.
Total, total possibility, total possibility.
So, we, we can talk to Sharice, to Sharice about the, the artistic part of it coming up, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks for.
Because I, I'm hearing that, I just don't know how to fix it right this minute and have you approve the program of studies.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that.
Okay, but you just wanna make sure that we're, 'cause I, I hear what you're saying, I, I think that we, we agree that textbooks are tools.
Yeah.
Right, so they can provide a certain set of, of facts and information, and, and, but there may be more to it than
Yeah.
what we're seeing, that's what you're encouraging us to look a little bit more about it.
But when we, when we, when we bring a new course to you, until you actually start to write the curriculum and develop it, then all of the stuff that you just said comes out.
Right.
Right.
So, and, and it gets tweaked, and it, and it grows, and it expands, and it, and it can be refined, but, um, that's somewhere down the road when you start actually doing it.
And that, that's why I, I've, I sort of qualified what I said by saying, I don't know if anything I say right now, really.
No, it does, it's a good point, but that's the reason why this process is in place, because we come, we come to you almost every year with redefining what we write here, so it more accurately reflects what the teacher is creating.
And what the kids need to know and be able to do, 'cause we're, you know, the, the content and, and the world is ever-changing, and the, and what our kids need to know and be able to do beyond the standards is still a part of our responsibility.
So I'm sure all, that will come up.
Okay, so you can just make a note, Peter, that, you know, look, look at the creati, how the, how the creativity and the arts work into the process of design.
Can I just get a copy too of the things that I missed? I was looking at Pam's, but I'd like to just have it, have it for, um, just my own records.
Where's my copy? I'm just gonna find, if I can find.
Oh, I think Laura's gonna get it for you, okay, there you go.
There you are.
That's service, Laura.
Service.
Thank you. Okay, so, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the high school program of studies as presented by Mr. Peter Lucia.
Including the new interdisciplinary.
Oh, including the new interdisciplinary and course titled.
Writing.
Writing about film, exploring historical and literary value in cinema. So moved.
Second.
Any questions, are we in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's interesting, I'm looking forward to seeing the peckles. Good.
Okay, so next is Park, so, I'm gonna do the, I, I know the most important thing I think we have to do tonight is to get to the budget discussion, so I'm gonna, Julie had a family commitment tonight that. I'm gonna, Julie had a family uh commitment tonight that came up, so I told her I would pinch hit her. So as you reviewed your packet, there's basically three documents that, you know, deal with, deal with Park. Um, well, two that I think you might have in, no, maybe you have the third one. Do you, did you get this one? The Park field test, did that come in your packet?
Yes.
Okay, so you have. So. So, okay, so that's.
There is a schedule, but I don't know if it's the same one.
Uh, it's in the, it's in the, yours is probably in the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Right? This one was one that we, I was using it administrative team, so it was my own little cheat sheet.
Okay.
So the PowerPoint, I think, um, in this PowerPoint, we will be sure goes up on the website, cause I think this is important and I should do something like this in my little bit of this in my blog. Um, but basically, you know, we tried to just pull out the highlights because as you know, um, and on the sec- uh, third page, there's an actual field test um dates, so that you can see. That um, we are part of the field test for the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career Careers, which is Park. Massachusetts has not completely decided whether it is going to participate or join Park. But it has agreed that it's going to do a two-year field test, two-year pilot. Um, so if, on the first slide, it just basically uh tells you, and maybe you didn't know, that Commissioner Mitchell Chester um, of the DESE in Massachusetts chairs the Park.
The Park.
The Park Initiative.
Yes.
Um, it's going to be for English, Language Arts and Math in grades three through eleven. And um, it, eventually their goal is for it to be computer-based. Uh, in fact, uh, in our field test, two fourth grade classes that have been, were just generated through a random process um, are going to be taking uh the uh, the test on the computers at Pembroke. Only Pembroke are taking the computer-based test. That's just what, when we, when we said we'd participate in the, in the field test, they came back and said, great, here's how it's gonna work. Your fourth grade's gonna do this, your sixth grade's gonna do this, your, so. Um, so the only computer-based test that we're administering this um, spring is at Pembroke for two fourth grade classes. The others are paper and pencil tests. Um, and so there are two kinds of tests they're testing out. There's the performance-based assessment and then there's the end-of-the-year assessment. And I believe our middle school is doing the performance-based assessment and our high school is doing the end-of-the, end-of-the-year assessment. Um, they, we quickly described, basically, our investment in in trying this out honestly was twofold. One, we wanted to um, see what kind of questions, cause when we get the MCAS test, we can't look at the questions. Right? And they're not the same every year, as you know. Um, we don't get, when, when, when we're, kids are working on the test, we're not allowed to be looking through the booklets and, you know, that's just part of the test protocol. We see questions after the fact, when we go in and we look and say, all right, little John here, Suzie, you know, missed this question. Let us go look. Some of the questions are made available to us. Uh, but in this case, the Park, the Park um, questions are set up in a different format and we'd wanna be able to get a look at the test, basically. Um, and see how our, how our students fare on, A, the way the questions are worded, the level of inquiry and and anal- analysis that's required to answer the questions. Um, and the problem with it obviously is there's no school, district or student results. It's completely a field test of the questions. And so, so that's their goal, is they wanna, they wanna make sure that the tests, the questions are good questions. Uh, so that when they transition to this assessment, they have a bank of questions that they feel are valid, reliable, uh, clear to the student and and can, you know, are good measure of what the kids have actually learned and know. Um, uh, let's see, let's go here. Um, so Massachusetts is three hundred and sixty districts, close to thirteen hundred schools, roughly eighty-seven thousand students in three through eight are basically part of this sample. And as you can see, more schools are administering the computer-based test than the paper and pencil test. So our field test, and we're gonna be getting information out to parents, uh, we talked about this at administrative team uh this week. Um, we're gonna put information about the field test just up on the websites anyway. And through the morning announcements, letting people know these tests are are coming and this is how they're gonna be done. And then for those individual students who are going to be lucky enough to have been selected to have the test, there'll be an individual uh correspondence with those particular children's families, letting them know.
Now, is there an opportunity for a parent to opt out?
Well, you know, I think most parents won't opt out because I think, it it's not like it's gonna count, right? It's, it's an opportunity for kids to take the test. I mean, obviously.
I'm just talking about the whole over-testing question that people have.
I mean, we'll see how that goes. You know, we're, we're, it's two, it's two, two sessions, a forty-five minute sessions. Um, a three for sixth grade, I think. Um, so we'll see. I mean, we'll work with families on that. Um, but again, we're, we're looking at it more as there's more, there's more benefit than than.
I mean, we might wanna talk to students about their experience afterward, so to see their perception. Do they feel overtested by it?
Yeah, there's no doubt that there'll be some people, and and honestly, that this is a statewide discussion. It's probably a multiple statewide discussion. Um, because there are a few districts that have said, we're not gonna do it, because at, at one point, there was a choice, right? You didn't, you know, they can't force you to participate in a field test. Um, so there were some districts that said, no, we're not gonna do it, because if you see, there is a slight overlap with AMCAST windows um, in a couple situations. But, you know, I think most districts are doing it, as you can see from this little fact sheet here, that what parents should know about Park. Um, and that's because there is no information that's gonna come back from it. And most people wanna continue to see how their students are doing on the AMCAST. They don't wanna be without a year's worth of data. I mean, to me, it wouldn't be a big deal if you were, you're looking for trends in performance, but for a lot of people, you know, that they like to to see the year-by-year analysis of of how kids, what progress kids are making. So we, we, you know, we made the decision to do both. Um, but obviously, it's a year of field test. I don't believe it's, I believe it's a one-time thing, one shot deal. So you can take a look and see that, you know, who's actually gonna be tested. So in ELA, just, I read the high school, grade nine, there are three classes, they're taking a paper test. It's the end-of-the-year test that they're doing and there's two sessions. So it just reads across. So we've got ninth graders, we've got uh, Algebra I at the high school, four classes, and that's a paper test. That's a um, end of year. And then the middle school, six, seven and eight.
And that's Algebra II.
Uh, where, yes, Algebra.
The high school.
I need my glasses on my face here. Okay, so, um, yes, so sixth grade, two classes are gonna be doing ELA. Uh, seventh grade, two classes math. And um, middle school, uh, eighth grade, two classes ELA, and Pembroke is doing two ELAs. And theirs is online, as I said, and that's the end-of-the-year test.
Do you know, um, are are the, the Park Committee or the, the, I don't know, is the state trying to decide eventually between the performance-based assessment from March to April and the end of year, or is is it their intention, if they roll forward with Park, to give the, both of these?
That's correct. I think that that's one of the things that they've been discussing is
In the same subjects?
Uh, well, there's, that, they haven't rolled that out, but there is discussion about not waiting till the end of the year and only having one test. At one point, they were talking about quarterly tests, but they've backed off of that. Um, at one point, they were talking about optional tests for kindergarten and grade two, and they have not developed that yet. So, um, you know, I mean, I think that's why the commissioner was taking a very aggressive approach to it. I mean, uh, there was such pressure placed on him, um, that he agreed to back off and make it a two-year pilot. Because it was, it was ready to come on board. It was just coming way too fast. And what now is happening is it's now what's gonna happen, right? And even in the field test, people are saying, we can't do this. We, we don't have the technology. We can't, how are we ever gonna give? And then there's a question about, you know, MCAS, you give a test on a certain set of days. There's a window here. So then the question is, well, is there security? Is their test security? And they apparently have a very sophisticated system by which they protect, um, I forgot what it was. It's, there is a, a name for it, where uh, they, they feel that they've got this very technical method by which um, tests are gonna be secure, even within that window. So that, you know, the town next to you is giving the test and you know somebody, they're all, yeah, I, but, they, they claim that that can't happen under their security system. Um, so the field, the back page talks to you a little bit about, it ch- it shows you, here's the window for the Park field test. Uh, you know, performance-based assessments are the twenty, March twenty-fourth to eleventh, the April eleventh, the end-of-the-year ones are May fifth to June sixth, and then this is the win, this is the one, the AMCAST test. We just wanted to do to see, you know, like, for example, ma- Science in grades five through eight is May, oh, sorry, mathematics, um, is May fifth through May twentieth. And then, you know, we have an end-of-the-year test uh, from May fifth to June sixth. So there's a big window there, you don't, it's not, I don't think we have to worry about the kids are gonna have to test in the same day as, you know, they've already taken the AMCAST test. So I, I think that there's a, a group of people in the district that are working on schedules to try to make, you know, all of this testing make uh, be, be reasonable for students.
And I mean, this is temporary.
It's just temp- you know, it's really, it's supposed to be a field test for a year.
Right. I, but I'm just thinking, so we had the MCAS system before, but that was, at least it was once a year.
That's right, that's right.
And, and if we moved to Park, it's gonna be twice a year.
It might be. I, I, I think you gotta, I, I, you know, I think the frustrating thing with all of this, Pam, is
I understand, there's a lot of good things about it.
These things get rolled out before they get rolled out, before they're ready to be rolled out. So what happens is you, you're already into it and all of a sudden, it's like, oh my god, here are all the things that no one thought about, right? So that's our, that's the frustration. It's not that the initiatives don't have potential to be good.
Right.
It's that the devil is in the details and
Like this detail, it just takes me by surprise.
They're, they're field testing these tests, but that doesn't mean they're gonna give them. Right? That, you know, I mean, they don't, they don't know. They don't know how it's gonna roll out.
Okay.
Massachusetts supposedly hasn't even decided whether it's gonna abandon MCAS and go with Park. Although, the commissioner's in charge of it, I'm thinking it's going that way, but I, if I were a betting woman, I'd probably bet that, but.
What would lead you to believe that?
Uh, I don't know. Um, but anyway.
Bottom line is, if it goes with it, there's nothing that we can do.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
But the, but there's a lot experimental about this.
But there is a, there is a, oh, you know, I mean.
Process right now.
You know, it, it isn't, we're in that testing climate, you know? I, I from fundamentally, after doing this for thirty-four plus years, that the pendulum will swing back again. It may not swing back all the way where it was, but there'll always be some kind of testing, but I'm not sure that it'll always be as it is right now. I think there's a lot of experimentation right now. There's a lot of policymakers that are trying to def- defend how they've spent billions of dollars on education and I think they don't know what they're really trying to measure. But they gotta have some number to associate with something. I think eventually they'll realize that teaching and learning is not about a number.
Some testing is, is preparation for life. I mean, no matter what, you know, career or field study you, you choose, as you go, oh, you're gonna continue to be tested. I mean, I, I worked in the insurance field and you're constantly getting certified and tested and taking courses. It's true in, in teaching, it's true in medic.
We just wanna make sure that the method is fair.
And that it's not detrimental, you know, too much. I mean, I mean.
Well, the, the frustrating thing with Park, and I think probably that's the last thing I'll say, and then we can move on, but the, the thing about Park is, you know, what I think is just, is frustrating to, to a, a lot of educators is, you know, we've spent ten years making improvements to schools and, 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 and to some extent, some kids that maybe didn't get the full education that they're getting now, because the standards are higher and now kids have to be exposed to some things that maybe in the past, some adults might have said, oh, those kids will never be able to do that. We're not even giving them the shot. Okay, so there, there's no doubt that some of these accountability things have pushed the envelope, particularly in urban education. For some kids that, you know, now are getting access to things and resources that maybe they hadn't gotten before, okay? So that's not a bad thing, but we, you know, we adjusted our teaching over time. You know, students, I mean, you see our MCAS scores, they show improvement. We know which kids need more help. Um, our tests have been aligned with the standards, you know, our courses were aligned with the standards. And then all of a sudden, it's not just a change in one thing, it's a change in the standards. It's a change in the question type. It's a change in the kind of test. It's a change in, it, so I, I think the frustration we all feel is not, not that there shouldn't be some kind of testing and not that there shouldn't be accountability, but wh- why are we, you know, what is it about the culture that, in the, in, in the country that says, no matter what we do, it's just not good enough? You know, you're not teaching hard enough. Kids aren't expected, we've been teaching college and career-ready skills for a long time. I don't know why all of a sudden, you know, there's a new game in town when it's really.
Called politics.
It's called politics. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, that's the sad part, because we all know what good teaching and learning looks like. We know what good school improvement looks like. You know, and some changes are, are really good and other changes, it's just why. You, you, you find yourself saying why. And I think that many educators are looking at Park and saying, why? So the standards now aren't high enough, you know, I mean, they're pretty high. Massachusetts is, you know, I mean, nationally, you know, our kids perform at the top. And then, and in, you know, against international standards as well.
That's right.
So, it's kind of like, well, when is it gonna be good enough, you know? When is enough enough? Yeah, so.
And it's up to us to just take it all and make it work the best way it possibly can for our students.
And that's the conversation that we've had at administrative team many times. It's like, there are certain things that we have to do that are, we have to comply.
Yes, right.
But that's, shouldn't be what's driving. Compliance shouldn't be driving us. What should be driving us is what's best and right for kids and faculty and schools and culture building and, you know, what's best, right? And so how do you take something that is about compliance and say, well, if we did this and we did this well, wh- what would it look like? Cause one thing the state doesn't tell you necessarily is how you have to do it. They do tell you have to do it, but they don't necessarily tell you how, every, every step of the way. So, you know, I think that's our goal, is just, we just need to keep things in perspective, okay? So I think, unless you have questions, I just wanted you to be aware uh, that the Park field test was coming and what the specifics are in case you get any questions. And we'll, we'll put the stuff up on the website. We'll make sure we get it out to parents.
Does the, does the town, do you think, know ten things parents should know about Park number one?
Let's see.
That's just, this, the uh.
I don't think it, they know that enough. And that's why I think when I talk about the context of it.
Public relations or whatnot, but, or your blog or whatever, I, I think, you know.
Yes, I agree.
Georgetown stands within the state of Massachusetts and then where Massachusetts stands is just something to you're really quite proud of.
We're very proud of it. Yeah. Yeah, that's a very good point, Rob. We'll definitely get that information out there. Thank you.
Okay, we might move along to the budget?
Sure.
So the budget.
Is it with your other stuff? Your binder?
Can you share?
Why use mine?
Cause I, I don't really need.
I do. I have Joan. They don't mind sharing.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you wanna tell them, did, did you wanna show them what the other thing is, just in case?
I did print out the, the summary page, um, with the full-time technology coordinator. And yes, so if you had decided on that, you'd have the number for the vote.
So the goal is tonight, you adopt a budget of some number, right? And then the plan would be that it would go, we have the binders ready. So, you know, if there's any changes, simply to change out pages. Um, but our goal would be to have them to go, we have to go to the FinCom tomorrow. They'd be picked up and distributed, however. And then, um, on March fifth,
Correct.
Which is next Wednesday. Uh, we'll go to the Finance and Advisory Board and I think maybe Pam and Barbie's gonna be able to have Pam and Rob as the budget and finance. That does mean you can't come alone, if you feel free. Uh, I think Laura posted the meeting just so that there would be no issue if others on the committee want it to come. And um, we'll, we'll go through it with them and we'll answer their questions and see where it goes from there.
At this point, we can make a motion, some of you could make a motion, to approve the budget as presented.
Or the, the pick.
Or the, or the, with the technology.
Okay, does this, so, does this budget include? Six, three, four, eight oh seven is with the full-time.
Correct. That's the only difference. That's the only difference.
All right.
The rest is absolutely the same.
Personally believe is.
I'll have to tell you, yesterday, we met with Joan and I and Mike and Margaret. Met with the consultants that are hired to, to do the technology for the technology, security, all of that for the Pemb- for the new Pembroke. We had to meet with them, cause they wanna explain the process and all that stuff. And, you know, they're asking all kinds of questions like switches and this and that. And you know, they're asking all kinds of questions like switches and this and that and that way, I'm going, okay. You know, and so you know, do you want all Macs, do you want half Macs, do you want Mac Labs, how many data drops do you want? Do you know, do you need sound enhancement, I mean. I'm like, we looked at each other, said, this is why we need technology director, that's just one. And then Julie, who's the curriculum director and Barry, and they've all been going crazy getting this Park field test. Uploading the names of the kids and that's all stuff that that's that's to me, that doesn't fall into their baili-. Um, but you know, obviously, everybody does what they have to do, so um, you know, I'm certainly not trying to press you into anything, I'm just saying. But yesterday, yesterday wasn't, if yesterday was an example, I am more convinced than ever that we need a full-time technology director.
I I'm ready to make a motion that the committee accept the budget with the full-time technology director.
So that would be thirteen, this the the num- right here, this number.
Thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen thou- thirteen million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars.
That's correct. Oh, wait a minute, she made the, Alana made the motion, gonna second it.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Is there any discussion? Is there, is there a discussion?
I I just wanted to, you know, say reasons that I I believe a full-time director of technology is is really necessary. Um, and I, you know, when we have all three schools up, we. We need somebody who knows how to create a reliable network and and server that's not gonna go down when students take Park tests, not to mention. You know, just the business of the school being conducted in in such a a manner. Um, you know, we need a a technology plan that's gonna comprehensively integrate K through twelve. At um use of devices and and how, you know, consider how teachers are going to best. Implement new technologies in in their teaching, um STEM initiatives are gonna be part of this. Um, you know, I don't know what would happen if we had a catastrophic system failure in the schools, I mean, could we? Possibly, who would be able to to really handle that and and that could that costs the schools.
And who's gonna answer these questions for the new Pembroke?
Much as a new technology director.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what about our firewall, do we do we update our systems, do we have adequate? Uh, you know, there's so many really critical questions that I I believe that we need a director of technology for at this point in time.
Well, the town is making a significant investment in the the elementary system.
Right.
With uh technology and has made a significant, you know, through donations, I mean.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have to make sure and I know Peter's very interested in, you know, and and middle and high school, I mean, you've gotta have up-to-date technology. In this day and age, right, so um and you don't wanna be.
You want somebody with a central vision who understands how it all works together, not just.
Right.
Somebody who's, you know, knows about these little machines over here and somebody who knows about those over there, you know, it's gonna hit the ground running.
Yes, okay, that's all I wanted to say. So, take a vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you, and uh we'll get the the books, change out a couple of pages in the books and get them to. Finance Advisory Board and then, you know, when that we get some feedback from them, you know, we'll take the next steps that we have.
Thank you, Carol and Joan.
I know, thank you, getting to that book, it was very um. Pleasurable to read. Oh, is that the first time you ever heard of a budget being. I'm sure Anne Life, I'm sure Anne Life has said that before.
Impressed with that.
She loves numbers.
She does love numbers.
I don't like numbers, but that's made it easier for me.
The you had a a.
Some invoices.
Some invoices for the turf field.
Yeah, they were, um, the first is the, uh, I think it's the second invoice of the project, the work they had completed um to date. Um, so you can have that, and then the second piece was a change order. For a little over five thousand dollars to do soil borings and sample collections. So, I think you need to go up to that and and you would have to sign both of those. And they were approved, um, I wasn't there, but Carol had put a note, they were both. They're just copies, you can take a copy, Rob.
And we just need what, the original signed?
I just need the original signed, yeah.
And just one signature is all enough?
Nope, it's just Bobby's, that's what I did last time and that was fine for the C.
I would just, I would just offer to the board that, you know, they're only billing sixty percent of the DD phase and. The permitting assistance, construction documents, there's quite a chunk to go and and where they are, they're they're, they could build more if they wanted to, so I'm comfortable.
At this point, you're saying, yeah, okay, okay.
Are we supposed to sign these or are we supposed to?
Barbie's gonna sign them, but.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the invoice from um Gale Associates in the amount of. Uh, fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and two cents.
Barbie, is there a number on the invoice, I'm just wondering if there's a number on the invoice.
Invoice number one, three, one, two, two, four, zero.
There you go. So moved. I'm sorry, is that?
I'm confused.
Yeah, so.
So it says total of this invoice is eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, but then it says outstanding invoices.
Paid that already.
Okay, so the what we're approving is the eleven, four, four, four.
Okay, then I was wrong in that, okay, so that the difference we we paid, that was like a crossover?
Well, I had to get your approval at the last meeting and then process it, then it has to go to CPC, so.
All of these are going to CPC after us, right?
After I get the minutes and your signature, so it takes some time.
Some time, okay.
And stack, so.
Okay, so Laura, I'm gonna um change my motion, the chair will entertain a motion to approve invoice. Number one, three, one, two, two, four, zero from Gale Associates in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Change order, change order number one.
Order one in the amount of five thousand, forty-nine dollars and zero cents.
What was the change order for?
For the um.
That boring testing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, soil boring and sample collection for potential future soil testing.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, they will appreciate that.
Sure.
Do I sign anything here where it says signature?
Yeah, you can sign that, and then anywhere on the other bill.
Okay.
So you're gonna approve the turf field, while we're on the turf field, maybe we could approve the turf field design. I think that's what we talked about doing, right?
Where it currently stands.
Yeah, what did you say, conceptually?
Well, I would, I would just reference that we're approving the drawings that were dated January twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, submitted NOI drawings.
Why don't you make a motion then, Rob, that that makes sense?
You all agree with that?
Sure.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the turf field design per plans. Dated January twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, as submitted for the notice of intent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
So the only other thing that we said we were going to talk about, I thought it was on the agenda, but the discussion about whether or not we're gonna. Test the soil.
Okay.
Remember we said last meeting, we're gonna ta- table that to discuss it tonight? And so one of the things that you, I think I had agreed to do or, yeah, you had asked me to do. Um, was to get uh to look into um, I guess liability and responsibility. So on your desk here somewhere, cause I know I have it.
Yeah, I read it when I got your notes here.
I received an email from town administrator today, um, and um. It's in here, I know it is. So, they have the 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 soil that they captured from these borings. So if the committee were to vote to um. Do the test, it would would happen fairly quickly. And then results would come back and then we would determine, you know, what what if anything um needs to be done. In terms of mitigation, um, the town administrator feels very strongly based on people he's talked to that it's not required. And for all the reasons in this letter, um. You know, the these are the li- these are the reasons that are being offered, whether they're good reasons or not, you know, that's up for a discussion, but. Um, his premise based on, it's like from an engineer, from the from an engineer, I'm guessing it's the. Gale engineer, but I'm not positive.
That would be the.
Um, that uh based on probably their experience and what they understand of the law, it wouldn't be required. Um, the question is, even if it's not required, is there some, you know, potential liability for the town if we don't do it? Down the road, in case there is, you know, an issue. And um that this is the uh town council's uh assessment of the situation. And of course, you know, there's never, you know, he qualifies at the end, you know, if it went to court, he's not sure, you know, that it, you know. That it would, you know, that he couldn't predict that the court would support his, right, his uh assessment of the situation. But anyways, this is for your discussion, but.
But none of us can predict the future and we have to rely on the best, you know, the informed information, people who are informed on these issues, right?
Yeah. I guess it has to do with this, you have to prove the town failed to act in a reasonable manner.
I guess, I guess, um, what, one of the questions that comes up for me is is the um, is the introduction from from uh Copman and Page. You have asked whether the town's liability, but uh is increased whether or not you test. Yeah, that's one question, but I don't in here see. Another question which I would like to get because I don't, I'm I'm uncomfortable as a school committee taking the this responsibility. Without being guided by someone who's a little bit more astute than, and no offense, I'm included in that, but. Um, I I would like to see a question, what does Copman and Page recommend we do?
It sounds like he, yeah, well, he is right, he stopped short of saying he doesn't re- I'm not sure he, I don't, I don't think he would think it was his job to. To advise the town on it, I think he he would say, my job is to let you know what the potential consequences are if you did. You know, if we if we were to ask Naomi, you know, I mean, it takes a lot for for her to say, this is what you should do. If I say, this is what we're considering, she'll say, well, what are you considering, what are you looking at, unless it's a blatant violation of the law. Then she's like, you absolutely can't do that, but generally speaking, if it's something like this, right, where you have kinda competing information. You know, he usually an attorney like this will say, well, if if you go this way, this is the potential consequence, if you go this way, this is the potential consequence.
And and I understand that and and maybe.
He'll give you a recommendation, Rob, is the point.
Well, um, let me let me ask this, is it pop- is it up to the school committee and the school committee only to be making this decision? Um, when this is about the town, um, in that, yes, I know it's this project is the school's property and I know it's a school, it's related to the school. But it's a town project and this is the, this is, this this goes to the issue of schools versus the town.
Right.
And I would, I I just think this is a potential can of worms and. While personally, I don't think we. Uh, would need to remediate anything here based on what's happened up at Pembroke.
Necessarily, right.
Um, I'm just really uncomfortable being a school committee, taking the responsibility for this. And by ourselves, and so I immediately reach out to then the selectmen. I my guess my first attempt was reaching out to the attorney to to advise us, but um i- if that's not possible, then then. Let's ask the selectmen what they think, and I'm hoping as a town, we can make this decision together because you just. It's just, I it this just makes me nervous, just makes me nervous.
So you're talking like a joint decision or joint discussion with the board of selectmen?
Yeah, yeah, that it, yeah, maybe maybe something like that, yeah, and hopefully they would embrace this as as all of us.
Working together, right.
Um, yeah.
I can see, I can definitely see where you're coming from with that, because it is, um. I didn't think the attorney would say like you had said, you know, do this or do that, but.
No.
I think um with it pretend, with the problems that we've had at Pembroke. I just think that it is something that, as a as a committee, I don't know how you two feel, but it does, like, it's like, wow, that's such a. Big decision when it's, you know, the town itself that could be liable for. Something if down the line.
I I I tend to agree too that this is, you know, we just listened to the presentation about how this isn't gonna be with the. The ideal plan, right, you know, how and and I wouldn't wanna be accused of pushing something through in the interest of budget.
So how would that work? I mean, if we had a a meeting with the selectmen.
That schedule.
Yeah.
Voted to test and we voted not to test or vice versa, and what if we didn't come, or would it just be like? A majority of of all?
But I think the selectmen would say, well, it's not our decision whether to test or not. What I'm looking more to the selectmen is is for them to almost like, for them to just be in agreement with us that that's. With them being the the, you know, the heads of the townspeople, I guess.
I guess I'm, I guess, I guess.
I don't know when their next meeting is though.
I'm not prepared as a school committee member to take on this responsibility, and I think it's misplaced. And I think um the selectmen need to be involved in this, and if they were to say, we're not gonna get involved or this is your decision. That I'm not gonna take the responsibility, and I'll I'll take the conservative route.
Right, then you could vote no.
Right, which is not what I wanna do.
Right.
Um, so that kinda dialogue with the selectmen, I hope, you know, they would say, look, we'll we'll do our vote and we'll te- we'll vote. Um, here and you guys vote here and ultimately, yes, it's your decision, but we're, you know, we're on the record. Um, so that if something happens later, let's say we choose not to test and someone s- uh sues the town. Um, then the record is clear that the selectmen who represent the town and the school committee, you know, did this together. It wasn't just the school district.
I don't have a problem with that, uh, you know, we just need to find out when their next meeting was and then probably get on their agenda.
They're on Monday nights, right?
I know, but I don't know, I don't think they need everyone.
Oh, okay.
Do you, do you have any idea, right?
Yeah, cause you go to the meetings, right? He's just, he's just for us.
He's just for us, okay, um, okay, so we have to find out when the next.
So then what we would do is ask to be put on the agenda and then just ask them.
You, well, you'd say, this is. Yeah, yeah, and um, you know, you could, I'm not, I don't know how they build their agendas, but. I'm guessing you you can get on the agenda and you probably just have to provide, you know, information as to what the issue, what the issue is and then um.
Say that we're looking for guidance or, you know.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to propose to them what we're looking for, which would be that we're looking for the two committees to. Uh, have an official vote, um, whether they're combined or separate, it doesn't matter to me, but that that they take part of the responsibility. For determining whether or not we test.
Well, I think what we should determine here is whether or not we, as a committee, we feel. Like either we we are for testing or we're not for testing, so when you think we'd we'd wanna know that before.
Like a little straw poll.
Yes.
Yeah, just to get like an idea.
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna go to them and go and have, you know, you assuming that.
So we don't wanna make a vote.
And I guess, I guess, I guess.
Idea first.
I guess, for myself, I would be looking to this meeting with the selectmen to hear what they think, I I I. I, 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 I'm not sh- I'm not sure, I don't know where I am on this right now.
Oh, okay.
Um. I, I would, I could, I would really like to hear what they think as representatives of the town, what they think and, and it would inform my decision. So I, I, that would, as far as a straw poll is concerned, I don't, I don't know.
You don't necessarily have an opinion right now, right?
I, I don't, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
At, at this point, I just, I felt after I um getting the information about Pemb- from Pembroke that it was naturally occurring, I, in the beginning, I thought that we should. Do this when, when it was in the beginning stages of finding out about Pembroke, but after I found out more information, I, I would, I am um comfortable saying that. Um, I would not, I would choose not to test.
I would agree with you, but just because it has been shown to be naturally occurring, there is no known public health impact that I'm aware of and I have checked the CDC stats. And then this, this letter, you know, from the attorney, I mean, that's, that's just my opinion, of course, I, you know, when I have new information come before me, then I can change my mind.
Good point, that's, yeah, that's good.
Where I am right now.
You wanna share?
When I got here and I read this letter, I thought, oh, this letter seems to be saying it's okay for us not to test. That's how I read the letter and I was, I felt like. You know, in, in a, in matters like this where I feel unqualified to make a decision, this is the higher authority that I would turn to. And even though they're not directly saying it, they're, you know, that's, the opinion is, is a more informed opinion about the legal ramifications than what I might venture, so.
So we're more or less with Rob, you.
Yeah.
Holding your opinion in abeyance right now, but we're more or less in agreement at, at this time.
Yeah, yeah, I, the majority of the board is, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know where Lu- I don't think I, I don't think we've had a conversation where Luanne's been part of it, so I don't know. Okay, so is the will of the committee then that we, we get a, a, a research when the next selectmen's meeting is? And try to get on the agenda and then somebody's going to, a couple few people, whatever, or a whole board's gonna go, so we have to check, we have to check availability, right? Uh, I'm not on flexible people are on Monday night, you know, like today is what, Wednesday, right? So I don't know if it's next Monday night, you know.
It's just the spelling bee, the Pembroke spelling bee is this, next Monday night coming up and I believe we're both judges, you have to be there.
Next Monday night. I have to be there, yeah, yes.
So that would um cause a problem.
That would not work.
Is there, is there?
Maybe it's the following one.
Is the schedule d- driving us to make a decision by a cer- what, what is that schedule?
Right, well, well, let, I don't know, let's look at it together, I um, yeah, let's see, so conservation is here, so they're, so they're gonna make, these are just the development of documents, these are the bids, I don't think that's.
Right now, we're up to the.
Here, here's.
But I don't know.
Here's where it would probably change is that.
The bids?
The bid period?
Is that um, if, if it was determined that um we were going to test.
Yes.
And um then the, the, the obvious question then is, is there remediation that's associated with it?
Right, and that would have to be worked into the plan, wouldn't it?
That would be. That would be my thinking.
Yes, it would have to go into the construction documents.
Right.
So that really is tricky, so that means it would, if, if there's a meeting next Monday night, you, you don't wanna deal with it, but it's a.
The other way to do that to Carol is, is with a change order, um, which is, they're the most expensive, you wanna avoid those if at all possible, but um.
I know, but I feel it's expensive.
Well, that's the thing, so next Monday is the spelling bee, the following Monday is the stack meeting.
Well, we, we can, I mean, I don't know, we can work around the stack meeting, but the spelling bee's kinda hard, yeah.
Yeah, the spelling bee's too important.
Well, it's just that it ends up being like a, a pretty long night.
Yes.
They do them all one night.
Yeah.
Would.
I mean, I guess you could send, well, you really want everybody, if you're gonna do that, you want everybody there, cause I was gonna say you could send a representative sampling, you know, Alana, Loreen and Robert may be available, but.
When, when are you judging? I'm judging fifth grade, which is six thirty.
But again, that's assuming they have a meeting, maybe they don't, are people, if it was the following Monday, are people available?
Yeah, if I didn't go to the stack meeting.
It's just the stack meeting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And, and for what it's.
Meeting that's two Mondays.
The next two?
Oh, okay, so maybe, maybe the, the twelfth.
Thank you. He's probably saying.
They, they have meetings the next.
He said the next two.
The next two, so the third and the tenth.
Thank you.
Well, I. I'm available with whoever else might be available on to go uh next Monday while you guys have the spelling and I know we all wanna be there. One way to handle it is to go um and we have two, three of us there if we're able to get on their agenda.
I know, I don't know what the agenda is. Yeah. All the town halls closed.
And we have this conversation and, and we, we leave with them that this is what we're looking for, which is for them to also take an official vote for the record, for their own record of where they stand on this issue. They probably won't do it that night.
Right.
But then we will have done our job and then uh next meeting, they would be able to take a vote and, and that, I think that's all.
I think the only problem, Rob, is I don't think, because town halls close tomorrow, I bet we can't get on their agenda.
Yeah, probably not.
Right, for this coming.
So, so it'd have to be the following Monday, which is, what do we say, the tenth?
You know what they do sometimes though, I mean, they're, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good about if you show up.
I don't know, maybe they might, but.
And um you're in the, you're in the audience and it, I guess this is too official a business to do it that way.
I think so, incorporate permitting revisions is March tenth, so.
Cause I don't think they'd take a vote without it being on the agenda.
I bet they wouldn't take a vote anyway that night though.
Well, yeah, yeah, and I wouldn't wa- I wouldn't expect them to.
Well, we can.
Is there a way to di- is there a way to dialogue with them?
Uh, I don't know, because, without, without.
Without.
Oh, you're making one.
I mean, your boards couldn't dialogue, I, you know, I could talk to Mike and he could get information from them and we could do it, but, but that's how, it sounds like you want it to be more of a joint discussion, joint.
Get them to just go on, I want to see what they stand.
I mean, sometimes we do schedule separate joint, you know, not necessarily at one or the other's meeting, but if they're meeting the next two Mondays, they're probably gonna be a little reluctant to add a third meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I don't know, maybe. So we'll, we'll handle it whatever way you would like to, I mean, we can ask them at the last minute, can, can you put us on for next week, but I think it's more likely the case they might say, okay, you can go on for the tenth.
Hmm. Well, could you go in the third with Rob?
Well, almost in this third grade spelling bee, so I don't, you know, if she wins, we might have to take her out to dinner, you know.
At least for ice cream.
Or something, yeah.
You wanna miss that.
So, but who's a, it, let me ask this, other than the stack meeting, who's available on the twelfth?
The tenth.
Tenth, sorry.
I'm available, I mean, it's the stack meeting, but I'm available.
Available, right, right.
Well, that's part of the purpose of this.
I mean, I don't know that it'll take that long, I mean.
They don't start till seven and stack starts at six to five.
Six.
Still get on the end of their agenda or something.
Right, maybe.
March tenth?
It's Monday.
Monday, wow, this is the first time I've used this smartphone for this.
For calories.
For checking my calendar.
Right, so is that what you'd like us to do, to check, check on availability of getting on your agenda?
Yeah. Would I do that with Steve or is that something that, that you would do?
Uh, you could try, you could try, well, um.
Steve's coming in the office tomorrow to.
Oh.
To sign something that you signed, so.
Right, yeah, he's signing those MSBA documents.
Okay.
Do you want me to mention it to him and ask him to call you?
Sure.
If I'm there, but what time, what, I don't know what time he's coming. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll ask him to give you a call, Barbie, cause even if I'm not there, Laura can say, you know, there was discussion and Barbie will have to call her.
Right. Should we actually call Rob?
No.
Whatever I can do to help.
No, that's, that's fine.
Well, let's do that then.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so now, I don't know, we don't really have much to report in subcommittees, do we?
Do, now, I know you guys know this, but I just, so if you wanted to go ahead and ju- and vote tonight, you know, to move this thing along, you guys still can do that. I hope I'm not making a molehill, ant, molehill out of an anthill or whatever, but, you know, by going to the selectmen, but.
Think it's a ma- mountain.
A mountain out of a molehill, yeah.
I get the animals and the insects confused, but um, you know, I just wanna remind you guys that, I'm sure you know it.
Thank you, but I, um.
I'm comfortable with waiting, I'm comfortable with waiting, I think the idea to bring in the selectmen is a really good one because. I agree with you, this is a town issue much more, as much as it is a school.
The town will be liable for it.
It's the towns, yeah, so we are making a decision that.
I can't get anybody to say that for a fact, cause I, I've been going back and forth.
But the liability policies and all that is on the town side.
Well, there isn't a hazmat policy, I know that because Ra- Mike told me that, so I don't quite know.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of having.
But what a way to find out, right?
Yeah, really.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
That's the problem, exactly.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I mean.
Yeah, no, let's hold off, the next meeting that we have is March.
Twenty seven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. I mean. Well, yeah, just means that we'll, we'll have to talk to, when we go to staff, we'll just have to, we'll just, cause the, uh, Rob was saying that permitting provisions in the construction documents.
The documents are.
Which they're trying to get out aver- they're trying to advertise and have the bid period be March twelfth through April second.
Hey.
So it's, it's pretty tight, so if, I mean, if you meet on the thirteenth, it just means that, I don't know, you understand this stuff better than me.
It'll go out to the fourth or something, it'll go out two days, yeah.
It will, it'll go, it'll go out later than that, you'll go, it'll go out like somewhere around fifteenth or something.
Move quickly in this town.
Right.
I have confidence with my school timeline, but this timeline.
You know what I mean?
See, I'm sorry.
So if we don't, if the school committee, let's say the school committee votes.
Yeah, not with conservation committee, yeah, there too.
Yeah.
Then, then you're saying that there may be some need to put something in construction documents, but you're not meeting till the, you're not, you wouldn't vote officially till the thirteenth.
That's on whose bid you accept.
Yeah, but, but if, if the construction documents are, I'm just trying to follow this, cause if the construction documents are, are being done on the tenth, that's before the thirteenth.
And then you have, and so advertising bid period, so they have twenty-one days to bid, you have.
Twenty-one days. But don't you have to tell them?
Yeah, but you could send an addendum.
Oh, you can, okay.
Um, as part of this construction documents and it's X number of days prior to the, to April second.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, that shouldn't be a problem, and if people vote not to test, then it's no issue, yeah, okay, got it.
Then it's a non-issue.
We could also come, it, it could also um.
Special meet.
End up being though with, the selectman might say, no, we don't feel that, we feel that it's, that it's your vote and they could certainly say that.
They could.
But it's your vote.
They could, I, I, I hope not, I really hope not.
No.
And I will say that in no one.
Okay. Good, all right.
Okay, so.
Or they could at least give their opinions and maybe if they did not vote, I mean, at least we could hear from them, that would be some information.
Pearly donation.
But a vote would be preferable.
A vote is all I'm, yeah.
So, so do we have a subcommittee, budget and finance, we still have to do that, please. The budgets, do you, governance? Uh, negotiations is meeting um soon?
Yes.
I don't have the actual date, but it's within a week.
Six.
March sixth. Okay, yeah.
Um, we met on January twenty-eighth, I don't know if I.
Yeah, you, you must have given it on date.
Spoken about that, I probably have, um, you know, the, the Facebook page is actually up and, and running and, you know, a few posts have been made and so I encourage everybody in the community to. Get connected and check it out and.
And you're on Twitter.
Yes, for Twitter now.
Oh, good.
On Twitter as well. With Georgetown of Schools.
Yeah, and, yep, and I've been posting on my blog.
And your blog is, yes.
Now, on Twitter, will you do like school, will you do any type of like school announcements?
No, I, I've delegated that to someone who will do that.
No, but like if there was like a snow day or whatever, would that, that would go out on Twitter as well as um, that could.
That would go on Twitter.
Yeah, as well as Facebook, yes.
So someone's in charge of that, that's good.
I'm learning how to twit, tweet, what do you do?
Tweet, tweet.
Twit.
There are a lot of superintendents that do, I'm sure you've had that conversation with them.
I have a twit. Yeah, I know. Exactly.
That's good.
Yes.
Uh, safety.
Uh, we have, that was canceled because of the snow day.
Oh, cause of the snow Thursday, oh, just like our meeting, okay, and school building committee?
The only thing to report is um next meeting, I think, is uh March eleventh and um then uh we obviously, we had the groundbreaking February.
Yeah, have you been, have you been there to see the?
Yeah, that was very nice.
Pretty great.
I haven't gone out back in, in like two weeks.
They're really moving.
It goes fast at this point and then, and then it starts slowing down.
And then you'll start to see like a slow.
Well, then they said, would you, what, cause I asked that same question, they said the same thing and they said, because the stuff happens inside then, so you don't see it.
Right.
You know, the, right now, it's the outside stuff, so you see that physically.
Now, if you wanted to go inside, obviously you'd have to wear a hard hat and stuff, would they let you do that?
You know, I, I don't wanna do that now.
Would you wanna do that? No, like one, well, throughout the process, you can do that?
Yeah. Mike, Mike Gansey will be in there all the time, yeah, once it's got, once it's built, he'll be in there.
Okay. Oh, we could ask to do that?
Sure.
To, to.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, you'd be escorted by the builders.
Notice how as the building goes up, how the site and the building change from looking like really big to really small to really big again.
Yeah, I know, it's true. It really is a very different, I, I, I had, I didn't have a construct for where it was gonna be, I was thinking it was gonna be way over to the right, not where it is, so it, it's, it's, I'm still getting used to.
Well, you drive in and there it is, it's like, wow, that, look at that school.
There it is, yeah. Unbelievable, yeah.
It is really.
Amazing how fast they, they move.
All right. All right, so I think, I think um.
Just the, just the two, acceptance of the pearly donation and the updated.
Why didn't I see that?
I know, I, I, the PTA, that's, oh, this is the high school PTA donation, the donation.
I don't have a, um.
I have it right here.
I saw the check.
PTA donation.
The high school.
Oh, okay, yes, so.
That was a large amount and I don't have anything a- as to what it was for, was that for a um?
It was technology.
Technology.
Technology?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And ten thousand forty-five dollars maybe?
Ten thousand forty-five, that's right.
You know what particular technology or? I can't remember, I just know that Peter was chopping it up after this.
I think it's app, Apple TVs and.
After the snow canceled this meeting, he wanted to do his purchase orders.
Apple TV and big screen televisions that can run the apps and.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the very generous um donation from the Georgetown PTA in the amount of ten thousand forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents to the Georgetown Middle High School to purchase technology.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very generous.
That's great.
Thank you, PTA, I know, it's very hardworking, every dollar.
Okay, so then we have the pearly donation.
Pearly.
Okay, so the pearly donation is um ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program. Um, received a nomination for them to receive a five hundred dollar grant and they were granted the grant. So it's a gift in the amount of five hundred dollars for the pearly school.
And that's from ExxonMobil?
ExxonMobil, Educational Alliance.
Right. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the very generous donation from ExxonMobil in the amount of five hundred dollars, the education alliance as presented. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, there is a, an updated um.
Homeschool.
Homeschool um list that includes a new family, so you can just approve the revised school homeschool plan.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the revised list of homeschooled.
Including the new family.
Incl- okay, homeschool families, including the new family for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year as presented. So moved, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Just, just one, just one more item, new business, not to discuss it tonight, but perhaps to get on an agenda at a later point. We talked about this before, but just to have a discussion about when any ti- when, when there's ever going to be, you know, improvements to the facilities, whether they're site related or building related or whatever. That um the school committee is always involved in the signing off on the final, whatever they're going to be, that we have this discussion, I'd just like to put that on that.
Well, actually, you know, about the, that's what the policy says, you have a policy already, it has to do with, well, well, maybe it, let me read it again, it has to do, actually, the policy. Has to do more with acceptance of gifts, cha- so if there's a gift or some, something is given to the school that chain, that potentially changes the school facilities.
Like the trees, like the trees, right?
Yeah, that potentially changes school facilities, the school committee has to approve it, if it's a monetary donation, you always have to do that.
And that's a gift. Yes. Yes.
If it's a item of educational, you know, it's kind of an educational, you know, maybe donation of library books for the library, then, then the policy, you could grant me the authority to just accept that, but I obviously notify, notify you. But I don't know in terms of, I don't know if we have an actual facilities policy, so we'll have to check that.
I'm thinking of anything that has to do with health, safety, welfare issues, um, for example, the, the pearly, um, parking lot. Uh, when the islands were taken out and the sidewalk was taken out, um, it had, it had consequences to that and that was never anything that we were a part of that was, and we're, that is part of our, our charge. Just to set up a framework, a process for in the future for when any of those things happen, that, um, there's a due diligence process that, that we take place.
So let me look at the policy book, is there, is a section on facilities, so maybe, maybe there, maybe it might be there.
Go home and look at that too, yeah.
Yeah. And look at it on the.
Okay.
So if there is not a policy.
Well, then we could make one.
Then you could make, okay, then governance would have.
Governance would do.
Okay, okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, I think we're done.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, so the, um, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at nine thirty two, yeah.
Second.
Questions about adjourning? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No question about adjourning. There you go.
Did you, did you take those, um.
What did I take?
You didn't take them, Rob, did you?
What?
The invoices?
I just gave.